All right. We're going to start the committee of the whole meeting for this evening. Madam Chair, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Aminz.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
Mr. Madigan.
Here.
Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe.
Here.
Mayor Pressing.
Okay. We have next the approval of minutes of our previous meeting on March 13th. Is there a motion?
I move approval of the minutes of previous meeting.
Okay. Eric Jacobson, second by who did that? Charlie? Charlie Smythe? Are there any corrections? Bill Brown.
On page two, Matt Cho's name, second paragraph should be CHO. And on page five, for adjournment, it says Chair Aminz declared the meeting adjourned, but I opened the meeting and I think I also declared adjourned. That should be being Brown.
Yes. All right. Any other corrections? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so those meeting minutes are approved. Will there be any additions to the agenda this evening? Okay, we don't see any. There's time for public input. I do have a few people who have indicated they'd like to talk, to speak. Two requesting at the time. I guess then Mark Neder, do you want to come forward?
Mayor, council members. I do want to speak to you tonight about the Landmark Hotel and Lincoln Square Mall. I wrote this before the News-Gaz editorial this week, but I think there's still some value in it, so I'm going to start. There's a list of 14 stores here, Carson Perry Scott, Burgers, Carriage Lane, Lockstock and Bagel, Rexall Drugs. The list is found in deadmalls.com/lincoln-square. And it was once a bustling mall, we all know the history of that, but it's taken time, but the public awareness of the private ownership of both the hotel and the mall is now problematic than anybody first even thought about. In the news media, city officials are only touting benefits of renovating a hotel, saying this renovation will lead to a rebirth of the mall. On the flip side, backers of mall projects think the mall will make the hotel more viable. Some questions. Will either happen if the mall is renovated too and they're done in tandem? Is the mall's owner ready and willing to renovate it? If he isn't, will the shabbiness of the mall detract from a renovated, brand-new hotel? Or if he's not willing or able to upgrade, will the taxpayers be asked to fund that too? Is anybody talking about this? Thank you.
All right. We have Elderess Melinda Carr, would you like to come forward?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Elderess Melinda Carr, 1308 West Tremont Street, Urbana. And I just wanted to, I indicated on the card, which I have been for several months now regarding the sewer concerns, Dr. Ellis' subdivision, and historic impact. And I just wanted to say tonight that I pray that the council will honor future information that we will be getting together as a committee to bring information to the council. And I know that Pastor Underwood and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood have been coming as well, so I just wanted you to know that we wanted to still bring information and we pray that you will honor the information that we will be bringing forward. We just need time to review with the election and a lot of things going on, so. And I have some, you know, recent issues as well as other, we pray that other people in the neighborhood will come forward with information as well. So that's what I wanted to do, is just bring that up and say some words to let you know that it's still a concern and we would like you to honor some time for us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think we will. All right, the other two slips I have requested, they come forward at the time of the topic. And one of them will be the sewer, sanitary sewer system, and one will be IDOT discussions. We've had a request that, so I guess that closes public input at this point. We have no other public input. All right, we have a couple of presentations this evening, and I've been asked to request that the UBA presentation be moved to the front. Public Works is willing to do that. So if there's not any disagreement with council members, I'll ask that the UBA presentation be prepared now, come forward. Welcome. You can introduce yourself.
Paris Baldarota, Executive Director of the UBA.
And my name is Scott Clannan, I'm with JSM, and I'm the Chair of the UBA Board.
Very good.
Thank you for having us tonight. The reason that we're here is to let everyone know what the UBA has been doing for the last year and what our vision for the future is, and just give everyone an update on that. So the first thing I want to do is give you an overview of the organization. So we are a nonprofit 501(c)(6) that is run by a board of different and diverse community businesses. So I'm going to quickly go through them. We have Scott Clannan, who just introduced himself with JSM Properties, Susan Jepson, who's our Vice Chair with Reynolds Towing, Matt Cho, who is our Treasurer with Sipyard Co-Lab and does a lot of downtown development, Lori Johnson is our Secretary with the Urbana School District, Dana Mancuso, Urbana Park District, Brandon Boys with the City of Urbana, Chris Lucman with CU Adventures in Time and Space, who has a couple of different locations downtown, Josh Laskowski of SJ Broadcasting, Jack Wallace, First Federal, Mauricio Salinas of El Oasis, Mohammed Alhidi, Strawberry Fields and World Harvest, and then Edith Peacock, who also owns H2O Salon and Spa Downtown. So you can see we have a great and diverse board. We are comprised of 140 member businesses, and I want to point out that we actually have a really unique business model. We are a membership-based organization, but we also run a lot of different community events. And we've actually done some research over the last couple of years on this, and we found that we really are, in our research, the only organization like it that we have found in the nation. Okay. And then we have our staff, I'm the Executive Director, and then we have Megan Casey, who's our Marketing and Events Manager. So we've got the small but mighty team that does it all, two of us that take care of the day-to-day operations. Our mission statement is to serve our members by promoting Urbana as a dynamic place to live, work, and do business. Along with our mission statement, we found over the last year or so since I started with UBA that there's, there was a missing link, so we wanted to start bridging the divide between our different communities and support all areas of Urbana-Champaign and our smaller surrounding communities. We found that we work and do business across borders, we have members with multiple locations and more than one city, and we also get sponsors from across our different communities as well. So we feel that it's important that Urbana is viewed as a welcoming and friendly community by bringing our people and our businesses together. So our mantra is, when we all work together, we all prosper together. Now I want to go into a little bit of the past when I first started with the UBA, talk about what we're doing now, and then just a little glimpse into the future. In 2015, when I took over the UBA, I saw that there were different growth opportunities, such as boosting our membership revenue, expanding our benefits and services, stabilizing the Sweet Corn Festival, and growing our indoor market, Market in the Square, which was previously known as Holiday Market and Middle Market. So in 2016, we began those improvements. We did some rebranding, a new logo, created an interactive website, created a new membership pricing structure, expanded our membership base, different collaborations and events with other organizations in town, recreating some more business enrichment services, and again, beginning that relationship building across communities and with other organizations. So now in 2017, we've started implementing a lot of these things. So I'm going to start with membership. We have a couple of different main categories. We have our business enrichment services and promotional services. So we have our industry expert workshops, and we started one early this year with Fundamentals of Networking with Jack Wallace of First Federal. And then coming up in April, we have Framing Your Following with Carl Cathedral of Adjacency, and that's going to give everyone an in-depth look into their social media and helping them redevelop it more efficiently. We also have Essentials that's put on by the UBA, and what that is, is a quarterly luncheon where people can come in, the community, potential business members, current members, to see what the UBA is, what we're about, what we're doing for the future, and just getting to know the UBA. We have our connection networking events, so we have Connections Over Cocktails and Connections Over Coffee, which are really great events for our businesses to get together, network together, but also invite the community in to get to know the UBA and our different businesses. And then we've developed a program where it's very cost-effective for our members to be able to sign on and participate and host these different events. And we do all the marketing and the food and beverage and help them with that. Ribbon cuttings, we can do that for grand opening of businesses, but if anybody would like to, if they have a milestone or an anniversary or something coming up, we can do ribbon cuttings for that. We offer a lot of different discounts. And then something new that we're developing for later on in the year is to have a member day where we go and visit our members and just show our appreciation and bring them a little treat or something. Our promotional services, we do the banner program, so we handle the hanging of all the banners in the downtown area. We have complimentary promotional services that people are able to take advantage of by being a member, so promotion on our social media, website banner ads, event listings, and we have a Talk of the Towny newsletter. And then co-op advertising, where we have created partnerships with the different media in town where they can take advantage of different discounted advertising opportunities. And then, of course, we have sponsorship opportunities throughout the year with the different events that we put on where people and businesses are able to expand and broaden their network and their promotion throughout the community. So some stats, for over the last year, we have currently 140 member businesses. We have new joins that have increased by 33% in 2016, and we're projected an increase of 50% for new joins in 2017. 2013 through 2015, our average annual member dues was $25,000, and projected by the end of this fiscal year, our member dues are projected to be $31,500. So we're showing a lot of growth in our membership as well. Back to the relationship building. We have been meeting with and creating relationships with the different business organizations in town, other nonprofits and community groups, such as the Black Chamber of Commerce, IMBIB, the One-to-One Mentoring Program, and the other business organizations. And I feel this is really important to broaden our network, improve our community relations. And we are in the process of getting together so we can have quarterly meetings, so we can keep up with each other in our happenings. So now we've talked about membership, I'm going to go into events really quick. We have the Indoor Market in the Square, the World Shortest St. Patrick's Day Parade, Cinco de Mayo Karaoke Contest, Encore Carvana Wine Festival, and Urbana Sweet Corn Festival. Market in the Square went through some rebranding this season, so previously Holiday Market, Middle Market, rebranded into Market in the Square, which greatly improved the success of the Indoor Market. We created improved marketing campaign, new sponsorship opportunities. We increased the number of vendor stalls and the number of vendors that we took into the market, which allowed us to grow to 105 vendors so far this season, and then added some different market dates, like the Christmas Eve Market. And then coming up on April 8th and 9th, we have a two-day collaboration with the WCIA Home and Garden Show, which is going to see 5,000 people come through, which I think will be really beneficial for our vendors to be successful. We've seen 68% revenue growth net since last season with all of the rebranding and changes that we've made. It looks like we're going to net $25,000 at the end of this fiscal year versus $14,000 for the previous five fiscal years. And then we projected that we can grow within the next three years to net $40,000 based on additional dates and spots that we can accept vendors into the market. St. Patrick's Day Parade, that just occurred, that was a great success, it was a lot of fun. It was a three-minute-long parade, one block, but people really enjoyed it. We had 400 people, a lot more people than we were expecting. The pre-party started at Sipyard, we had Van of Hill to Toe as our Grand Marshall, and then we had Marching of Linai, and of course, our mascots, Corny and some vegetables from the market. So that was a really great success there. The Cinco de Mayo Karaoke Contest, that's just a fun little contest we're putting in there, holding at the Civic Center. It falls on Cinco de Mayo, so it's just a play on that. People can sign up for the possibility, win $200 cash prize. Encore Carvana, that happens in June every year, this will be the fourth year. We attract over 2,500 patrons, 15 wineries, local food trucks, live entertainment, more sponsorship opportunities. This year, we're actually going to lower the entry fee to make it more affordable. And then we've partnered with City of Urbana, with Natalie of the outdoor market, to host some cooking demonstrations throughout the festival for us. Okay, so we've got Sweet Corn Festival, which is our biggest festival of the year, and our biggest change this year is that we're going local. But before we get into that, I'm going to talk a little bit about the history of Sweet Corn. It's Champaign County's largest free annual festival, 42 years old this year, started in 1975 in the Bucie parking lot. Over 50,000 people attend each year, we consume over 20,000 ears of corn, over 70 vendors, live music, kids' activities, car show. This year, we're changing it to become more local. So we want to, well, we are going to be including the downtown restaurants and bars to make it more financially beneficial for our downtown businesses. Bringing in more local vendors, like food and crafters, creating lower pricing so it's more affordable for our local businesses to participate into the festival. Working with CUPHD to make it easier for the restaurants to be able to participate, so we'll do that upfront work for them and have a plan ready. Virtually ticketless system, which will help with lines and traffic flow. Expand local entertainment, expanded family-friendly activities, and then different corn-themed activities, such as food and games, maybe like a cornhole tournament or a corn-eating contest during the day, so there's more daytime activities as well. So with that being said, we've actually already started working with several of our downtown businesses that are on board. We have Sipyard, Bunny's, Rose Bowl, Crane Alley, Iron Post, Black Dog, Pizza M, American Legion, Courier Cafe. All of the managers and bar owners are in support of these changes, and so we're working on a plan right now to implement those. And then we're going to continue reaching out to our other local businesses and downtown restaurants to incorporate them into the festival as well. So the financial impact of those changes will allow UBA to cut our expenses by more than half, which will in turn make the festival more financially successful this year. And the major categories that we're going to be cutting are alcohol, entertainment, security, stage lights, tents, tickets, and the vendor payouts with the changes we're doing with the vendors, which in turn will reduce the city's contribution by $5,000. Every year, we have over 40 businesses that support the UBA with sponsorships for our different events that we put on, so we receive $150,000 total annually in a combination of cash and in-kind sponsorships. So what are we looking at for the future? Just a little tidbit of our goals. UBA would like to become a self-sufficient organization, so we want to have more earned revenue and less city support. We'd like to be able to function on our own. With these changes, we would implement a Give to Grow program that we've been developing, which would allow us to offer scholarships, grants, community and small business funding, create a new elite marketing program for our businesses, and then increase our business enrichment services, which are different workshops and different things that we put on for our members. So coming soon, there will be a new UBA agreement proposed. We are coming to the end of our three-year contract on June 30th, but for now, I just wanted to give you guys an overview of what we have been doing over the last year. So I want to thank you for your time and invite you to our Connections Over Cocktails tomorrow night at Riggs Beer, and we will have food by Dispassionate Cuisine and complimentary drinks. Thank you.
Okay. Would there be any questions for Paris and Scott? Yes, Mayor Pressing.
You said that $14,000 over the last five years, is that the total for the five years or is that 14,000 a year?
For the markets income?
Yeah.
That was each year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Bill, and then Eric.
The numbers, the increase in membership's pretty impressive. Did you, what did you do to make it go up 33%, was it?
I, just developing the different programs, the workshops, the seminars, recreating the networking events to make it more affordable for the businesses to host them, but take, because they were normally located just at one location. So we took it and started rotating them around to the different businesses and allowing exposure to those businesses, and then just word-of-mouth of people finding out of the recreation of them.
And then for the Sweet Corn, did I hear you right that you said you were going to reduce alcohol or eliminate alcohol? Is it going to be alcohol-free?
No. The alcohol service, the majority of it's going to be through the downtown bars, so because of that, we reduce our alcohol costs, but then the bars will be able to gain the revenue from those sales, which will be financially beneficial for them.
Okay.
But it's just going to be through the bars will be the beer and alcohol, we'll have a couple of beer stands outside in the festival.
So people would still be able to take a beer to a concert and drink it outside?
Yes.
Okay.
And then Eric.
So I and a couple of other council members went yesterday to a presentation at the Independent Media Center for the Open Scene Project, which also resides in downtown Urbana, but there's no, there could be, in my opinion, a really beneficial connection, but there isn't right now. So I guess it's a suggestion that, you know, reaching out to them and seeing how there might, I mean, I looked, for example, at the karaoke contest, and I thought, man, those kids could really contribute to that from a different direction. So I guess I would encourage some contact there.
Yeah, we're always looking for new opportunities to, you know, collaborate with different groups, so that's a great suggestion. Thank you.
And Aaron.
So Paris and Scott?
Yes.
Thank you all for the presentation. Do you all do with the developing businesses, do you work with like contractors as well?
We do have contractors that are members, but specifically, what do you mean?
Well, of course, I'm always trying to make sure that we're creating access for everybody. And so in particular, we're doing a lot of work with minority women-owned businesses, veteran-owned businesses, so I'm trying to see if there's a particular focus that the UBA has on helping those individuals get to a particular point where they can do business at a high level and not just some of the smaller jobs that are available.
Yeah, so when, that's where building our relationships with the other business organizations come into play. Like the EDC, we've started building a relationship with them because I feel like each of us have our strengths on helping business development, so I feel like the EDC is a good place for people to start. And even like with Will Kyles of the Black Chamber, we're looking at developing programs where we can cross-promote each other and help each other out as well. So we welcome anybody to come to the UBA, see how we can help them, what our benefits and services can do for them, but if we feel like there's another organization that's stronger in that area, then we definitely make that connection and refer them to that organization.
So does the UBA contribute at all to some of the other programs? We get a lot of conversation about how business can contribute to some of the other issues that we have in the community. Job creation, of course, is one, and the tax revenue that you all create. But we're also looking at different programs that are functioning in the city and trying to grow and trying to do what they can to help alleviate some of the concerns in the city. So for instance, the Summer Youth Program, does the UBA contribute at all as a whole to something like that?
We don't currently at this time, but one of the programs that we did, you know, get involved with this year was the One-to-One Program. So like I said, we're always, we're continually building and growing, so as much as we can start adding to our portfolio and helping the different community groups and organizations that are out there, we're more than willing to do that.
I certainly want to advocate very strongly for the Summer Youth Program. With 140 different businesses, maybe that could mean 140 different jobs. And I know Mike wanted to take two or three people in particular for the Summer Youth Program. I know, I know. So that's something that's intriguing to me, to see what level of service or opportunities exist for that collaboration. The other thing is, when I look at your, you said your dues structure right now is somewhere from 25 grand to moving up now to possibly 31, right? So if you get exactly what you want with 31,000 from each one of your, is that $4 million, 4.4 million dollars that you have annually?
No, that's our total revenue for membership. So we get 20, previously was around $25,000 a year total annually for our revenue, so we're looking at our total annual revenue being 31,500 just from membership dues this year.
Oh, okay, because I was going to have a hard time.
That would be awesome.
I was going to have a hard time giving you money.
You probably wouldn't be funded by the city anymore at that point, would you?
No, you wouldn't.
Yeah. Maybe I could help you out.
Speculation.
And so my last question is around dealing with a lot of culturally sensitive type of things. The Cinco de Mayo that you all have, is that something that you collaborate with the Latino community on? I did some research and did a paper on Cinco de Mayo, and there's a lot of different feelings about the commercialization, the stereotypes, and all these types of different things of Cinco de Mayo. And I was just wondering if there was any work that you all were doing with the Latino community to see how they felt about something like that.
We have not yet. One of our board members, Edith of H2O, that is somebody we're actually going to connect with to see, because I understand where you're coming from, that's something that we thought of too, that we want to make sure that we are sensitive to the different groups. So since it's a little farther out in our timeline, it seems like it's coming up quickly, but for us, we've done a karaoke event before, so the plan is there. So yeah, we are definitely looking to reach out to make sure that we are sensitive to that.
All right, thank you. Okay, any others? Diane Marlin.
Back to the membership. What percentage of your total budget is the 31,000? That's this year's membership, right?
Yes.
Approximate, do you know?
I would have to look at that and get a, I can get back to you on that.
Do you have a goal for, you know, in your route to becoming self-sufficient, do you have a goal for what percentage of your budget you'd like to see coming from membership dues versus city support versus other sources of revenue?
I haven't put it in comparison to membership dues. I actually have created a budget based on events and membership and sponsorships and different things like that, but I haven't broken it out into percentages of each of those categories yet, but it's definitely something I can do.
And is the new Sweet Corn Festival a plan to be a break-even event, a money, a revenue-producing event? I know it loses now.
Yes. So right now, with the cuts in expenses and the creation and the income, it's actually looking to make money, have a positive cash flow this year. That's the goal, and that's what the budget shows. I mean, yeah, you're right, like a break-even would be great at this point, but it's looking to make money this year, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And I had one question.
Sure.
You mentioned something about during the Sweet Corn Festival that there would be reduced tickets, or you said something about the tickets?
Oh, the ticketless, virtually ticketless?
Yeah, how is that going to be? Is that going to be a cell phone device or something else?
No, there'll still be tickets, but the change that we're making in how we do the food vendors is that normally we the food vendors is that normally we would take a percentage of their sales. But in order to make it more affordable for the local restaurants to be involved, we are not going to take a percentage of their sales. We're just going to do a flat rate for them to be a part of the festival. Therefore, we don't need to take tickets for the food vendors. So that eliminates, that'll just be a cash basis. The only thing we'll take tickets for are our beer stations and the corn. And then since the other alcohol sales will be going through the bars, that'll be cash sales for the bars as well.
So the food vendors will be collecting their own, and doing their own cashing in and out?
Yes.
Just like, just like a business would be?
Correct.
On the, on the street?
Uh huh.
Okay, thank you. All right, maybe that's it. And we appreciate your coming to talk to us and probably end up seeing you again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now we're going to go to something very exciting. We have an annual sanitary sewer report coming up, followed probably very quickly by the lateral pavement reimbursement program. Okay, we have Brad Bennett. Are you going to be ready? And I don't know your friend.
Thank you. I guess I'll start out with introductions. You, I'm Brad Bennett, Assistant City Engineer. And I, with me tonight is Justin Swinfert, who's our Drainage Engineer. So Justin manages the storm and sanitary sewer systems. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Justin.
All right. So the first presentation isn't really much of a presentation. You should have a memo summarizing the annual sewer activity report for your 2016. The full report is available on the city website, and we are happy to answer any questions tonight if there are any on that report.
So I have a question. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Erin.
So the, I'm a little confused. First, I see a sewer, the lateral pieces up here, but we're not, what should we addressing? Are we actually looking at the sewer program?
Yeah, the first part is the, just the sewer activity report.
Okay, so when we're looking at the, the cleanouts here, or the activity that's done in the actual sewers, we're talking about the main pipes that lead to the sanitary district, right?
Correct.
To the, okay. So when those are cleaned out, is there, for instance, as a homeowner, is there a certain amount of, like, chemicals or whatever? Like, some people have been making some complaints about, from washing your car to what you might use on your lawn, various different things, and talking about how much of that actually gets into the sewer system and how that may become a problem or not. That's some of the things that I've been hearing. Could you just talk about that just briefly to put to rest any sort of concerns or myths around household products being used or anything like that?
Yeah, that sounds like something that would be considered run off. Typically, from pavement or lawns, that water would eventually get into our storm sewer system. That's separate of our sanitary sewer system. The storm sewer system eventually flows into our waterways, such as the Boneyard Creek or the Saline Branch. So typically, we tell people that the only water that should get into that system is rainwater. I know it's pretty popular for people to wash their car in their driveways, but if you think about where that, those chemicals, even, you know, soaps and that sort of stuff ends up in the waterways where there is wildlife, you know, we have fish in the Boneyard Creek and other, other animals. And so even that, what seems clean can be harmful to that wildlife. So the same goes with certain lawn chemicals within certain, within reason. You know, it's never really advisable to cover your lawn with too much chemical. But we can provide more information on, on what, I think we have a couple pamphlets at the Public Works Department that provide information on what sort of things should and shouldn't get into the storm sewer system.
So now, if somebody wanted to make a connection from their, their home, right, from their, the toilet, whether the pipes that leave from their toilet out into the sewer system, is there a, does the city have to make the connection from the main line to the, to that lateral coming out of someone's home, or could I hire somebody to make that connection?
Yeah, so in most, almost all cases, that connection would be made by a private contractor that the homeowner would hire. There's a right-of-way permit that must be obtained, and typically in the case of a new construction or replacement lateral, there would also be a plumbing permit through the Community Development Building Safety Division. Those permits are to make sure that, we know that it's happening and that the construction is done properly. But those, those connections are typically made by contractors working for the homeowner.
Okay, thank you. And then Mayor Pressing, and then others.
Okay, I'm looking at your chart on figure one on the sewer backups. This huge increase from 2014, you had a, you know, a dramatic decrease after that, but why was it such a problem in 2014 was, what was the problem?
These sort of things can be difficult to determine what exactly caused each particular backup. These are, this graph is representing public, or backups in the public sanitary sewer. So the city-owned sanitary main in twenty-
Not somebody's basement?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. So these are when people called the city, Public Works Department said that their, their toilet's not flushing. We go, our operations crew would go out and check the city main, and if they find that that main isn't flowing, there's a blockage somewhere in the city pipe, then they would clean that out, clear out the blockage, and get things flowing again. So that's what this graph is representing specifically.
Okay, thank you.
Bill Brown.
And then I had a question about the surcharges, but I guess that's where, there's too much water in the pipe, basically. Is that from, does that, is that influenced by weather, if there's storm events or something like that, because if there's extra water gets in there?
Yeah, so depending on which sewer system we're talking about, the storm sewer system is obviously designed to take on storm water, but for the most part, it can only take on so much. We classify storms as, we call it like a five- or ten-year storm. That would be something we expect to see ten to twenty percent of the time. But at the sanitary sewer, we can see surcharging also, and typically, that's a result of excessive inflow and infiltration, which is something that we're constantly working against with the sanitary sewer. A lot of older pipe that we own and maintain is constructed of clay tile, concrete pipe, and then we've moved towards more plastic pipe with better joints. But the older infrastructure where they have, or where it was constructed with less effective joints, or where the pipe is falling apart itself, can allow a lot of water into the system, as well as water coming from deficient sanitary sewer laterals.
And then I had a question from a constituent a few weeks ago, and I gave him our website reporting thing about smelling sewage smell from a storm sewer. How often do you find some kind of interconnection? And is that recorded in here anywhere when you, when you find those sorts of things?
We do have, we do report illegal connections, is what we call them. As far as we know with the, with our storm and sanitary sewer mains, we should not have any connections between the two. But on occasion, we will find, whether it's an older building or something that was just done without, without inspection, there may be a connection from the, you know, building's plumbing line to the storm sewer system. So anytime we find those, we are, we make sure to contact those property owners and try to remediate the situation as quickly as possible.
Okay, and he understood that it could have been probably, could have been rotting vegetation or something he smelled too, but, you know, if it's suspicious, he should report it?
Yeah, it's always something that should be reported, because if there is anything that we need to fix, then it's better to do it as soon as possible.
It might have been my son's dead fish, right? No, I don't say that. Diane Marlin.
I have a couple of questions about the reimbursement program. So we, we currently budget forty thousand dollars a year to help homeowners with expenses related to repairing the pavement that has to be dug up for sewer repairs, correct?
Right.
Is that forty thousand carried over? I mean, are you building up, is there money built up in that fund, or is it just forty thousand a year that's satisfied?
That money, if there is money left in that line item each year, it's rolled over into the sanitary sewer improvements.
So it doesn't stay in the reimbursement fund?
No.
Okay.
At the beginning of each year, there's just forty thousand.
So you, you brought up the possibility of changing the reimbursement program to a unit price reimbursement?
Yeah, and that's what the present, the next presentation will be. Yeah, so that's, it's-
Shall I wait?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
I'll wait.
All right, others, Jess, Erin.
So from a stormwater standpoint?
Yes.
For instance, on my street, Bucy Avenue, we have water that runs down the slope from north to south, and then whatever's running from south to north, it sort of meets up at two stormwater grates, right, that every time it rains, gets all backed up and stuff, and then floods up into the yard. Occasionally, gets up so high that it gets into the bottoms or into the floorboards of people's vehicles. I don't understand why a problem like that can't be fixed, or is there something that could be done to fix something like that? It could be another, is there another grate that could be put up further south that would take some of the water, or, I mean, is there a solution to something like that?
Yeah, when we receive reports of flooding in that case, we, we will assess the existing infrastructure to determine if the, if there's sufficient capacity with those sewers, you know, within reason. And then, or if there is something wrong with that storm sewer system. Since 2013, we've been doing annual storm sewer cleaning and televising. That's funded by the stormwater utility fee. And so it's a relatively new project, or annual project for us, but it's allowing us to catch a lot of deficiencies in the storm sewer system. So that's something that we're coming across more and more, is areas where, of concern where we may need to make repairs. But another great way of catching those is just people reporting that they're experiencing some flooding issues.
I want to report that we're experiencing flooding issues on Bucy Avenue, and they've been going on for years.
Okay.
So, okay, thank you.
We will check that out.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It was my car that got flooded. Sunset is the northern cross-street, and then Fairview is the southern one. And I'd have to look a little bit closer, but I know that there are two drains directly, one on the east side and one on the west side of the street, and they both clog up with all of the debris and everything that gets flushed down. But they are doing a better job of cleaning the streets, Mr. Johnson, if you're watching. Just wanted to make sure that we raised that concern. But, I mean, that's what happens there on a regular basis.
Yeah, we'll definitely look into that.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you for the summary of the stormwater sewer presentation, and we have the next one is the sanitary lateral pavement reimbursement program. We do have another person who's going to want to speak after the presentation or during that time. Okay, go ahead, though.
All right, yeah, so we do have some, a presentation for this one. And so I think this was brought up during a presentation at the council last year, was possible revisions or just reviewing the existing sanitary sewer lateral, or pavement reimbursement program. And so here's a quick overview of what we'll talk about. We'll do some basic definitions of sanitary sewers and ownership, a history of the program, and then potential revisions to the program. We've put together just some, some options, and then we'll be looking to council for any recommendations or, or guidance on where to, or how to move forward. So these are the three main sewer categories that we deal with, for the most part. Sanitary sewer interceptors are owned and operated by the Urbana-Champaign Sanitary District. The collector sanitary sewers are what we deal with at Public Works. And then sanitary sewer laterals are the smaller pipes that connect property, or homes or businesses to the sanitary sewer main. So here's a visual of those. The, the red lines shown, if you can make them out, are the interceptor lines. Those are typically larger sewers than the green lines would be the collector system. And then we've shown just a few of, of the laterals there, connecting the house to the main. So in most cases shown here, the sanitary main is, falls under the street. In some cases, if you look to the far right, there are actually sewers in the backyards. And then this is an elevation view showing where the ownership of the sanitary sewer lateral ends, or, yeah, ends and the city ownership begins. The city will own and make any repairs to that service connection. And newer, newer construction, that would be a Y, it's a factory-made fitting. A lot of times, we'll still find an older construction that someone just took a hammer and busted a hole in the pipe and then connected the pipe to that. So it's definitely not something we allow anymore, but it is something we find. And then this is the wording in the city code that defines that ownership of the private sewer lateral. And then it'd be worth noting, too, that while the city does, we do have annual programs for repairing our sewer main. Oftentimes, homeowners don't do much, we find, to, to maintain or keep their sewer laterals in a great working order until there is a significant deficiency or breakdown. And now, a history of the sewer lateral pavement reimbursement program. Introduced in 2007, became effective January of 2008. The original program covered, or was to reimburse property owners for fifty percent of construction of the, for the pavement removal and replacement, up to a maximum of three thousand dollars. So if, you know, they hired a contractor to do this work, the city would reimburse for only the cost of the pavement and backfill necessary for the street pavement. This would not cover the pipe at all, and it wouldn't, would not cover any backfill outside of the city right-of-way. In 2016, there were, or 2013, there were two revisions. The first was somewhat short-lived, upping the reimbursement percentage to seventy-five percent and a maximum of forty-five-hundred-dollar reimbursement. And then in June, the existing program was introduced and upped the percentage to one hundred percent, so full coverage up to five thousand dollars. And again, that's for the cost of the pavement and necessary backfill. So this program was intended to ease a financial burden for property owners. And as you saw earlier, in some cases, there are no, the sewer's in the backyard, so there wouldn't be any pavement replacement necessary for a lateral repair. Since 2008, we've had fifty-two people participate and almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars distributed to help with the cost of pavement replacement. And this is funded by the sewer benefit tax. So here we see, it highlighted a somewhat typical replacement. This one included sidewalk, curb and gutter, and then about three-quarters of the width of the street replaced with concrete. Typically, these patches are a minimum of six feet wide, and then not much larger unless necessary. The trench is usually only about two feet wide, but we do require for our right-of-way standards that the pavement patch, we put back no smaller than six feet wide. And then same with the curb and gutter, but the sidewalk panels are replaced at a minimum.
So can I?
Yeah, go ahead. Do you have a question?
What would it, what would the total cost of that repair have been compared to what was actually reimbursed?
That can vary. We do have information on, on that cost, but that's one of the potential flaws of the program is that different contractors- program is that different contractors will charge different amounts of money, and also there is public knowledge, I mean, ever, we promote this program, so contractors are aware of the maximum reimbursement that can be received, so. So, this particular repair could range anywhere from, I'd say, you know, three to seven thousand dollars or more, and that for the pavement, but it just, again, it varies based on the contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Another thing worth noting about the, these sort of repairs is, there isn't often time for people to get multiple bids or quotes. If your toilet's not flushing, you're not gonna spend a week calling around and getting people to show up to look at it. Typically, the first contractor that will respond gets the work, so that can be another, another cause for higher cost.
Yeah, Bill Brown has a question.
When somebody needs to repair, I know they're supposed to contact the city pretty soon, do they contact the city before they make a contract with the contractor?
We always encourage if anyone's experiencing a backup, to contact the city first, so that we can check and make sure that there isn't a blockage or a breakdown in the city main. As far as eligibility for the reimbursement program, sometimes we might not find out until we get the, I mean, we'll have a right-of-way permit for the work to be done, but we may not see the application until the work is already been done.
So, does somebody from the city have to go out and actually look at, look at the right-of-way before the permit is issued?
Well, not before it's issued, the contractor will get a right-of-way permit, and then before any pavement is replaced, our right-of-way technician will inspect the site to make sure that the appropriate backfill has been placed and that the pavement patch width is.
Okay. I noticed one spot where a repair was made, that it was a concrete street, and they took out like half of a concrete slab, and it was a, really, it was a bad slab anyway, it had the rebar showing and stuff, I just thought, well, while they were there, maybe the city could have paid for them to replace the rest of that slab, but is anything like that possible?
I can take that one. Usually, we're reimbursing the homeowner for it, so we don't have a direct relationship with the contractor, and there's a reason for that, which is the prevailing wages, 'cause any work that the city does, infrastructure related by state statute, has to be prevailing wage. So usually, we're reimbursing the property owner, so we don't have an opportunity to add extra work onto it with the contractor. If it was our contractor doing the work, you know, that would be an option, something that we could look at, and we do have to balance it a little bit, you know, because the homeowner is paying for it, we don't wanna make them replace any more than what they have to, so it's a little bit of a balancing act.
That probably doesn't happen very often. Mike Madigan?
So, does it make any sense to explore doing, I don't know, if it would be an RFP or what it would be, some kind of process where, I assume people have to be licensed to do this, right? The resurfacing?
No, you just have to get a right-of-way permit from the city, which there's insurance requirements that you have to have, and you have to have a bond for ten thousand dollars in case there is any damage to the infrastructure, but this gets more into the plumbing code, but my understanding is once you get five foot away from the foundation, you aren't required to be a licensed plumber to do sewer work.
Well, I was just talking about the resurfacing, not necessarily the plumbing.
Yeah, no, we actually don't have any licensing requirements.
But the same company does the whole job, the plumbing and the resurfacing?
Generally, yes.
Is it, does it make any sense to, at least with regard to the resurfacing, to require these companies to publish a rate schedule every year? Try to introduce a little bit of competition before the fact? Publish a rate schedule for, you know, how do you measure concrete? I forget, cubic yards?
Yeah, or square feet sometimes.
Square feet, cubic yards.
Yeah.
Yeah, the way a lot of these sewer excavator contractors work, a lot of times when someone calls them with an issue, generally, they just give kind of a lump sum price, and that's one of the things we struggle with, 'cause as engineers, we always wanna work in unit prices, so we can measure up and figure out what the cost of something is, but the way that sewer contractors typically work, you know, you call them, you say, "My line is broken down in the street," and they'll say, you know, "It's five thousand dollars for us to come out and fix it," and they typically don't break their costs down in, you know, to what, you know, it was per square yard or square foot of pavement that replaced, so that is something that we struggle with, and it's just the way that they do business, you know, 'cause they're just giving a price to the resident, and at the end of the job, they, you know, collect that sum from the resident, they don't get into the unit prices like we do on the, on the public infrastructure side.
So it's just a lump sum, it's not broken down between excavation, plumbing, repair, resurfacing?
Sometimes they'll break it down, but generally, it's not broken down into like unit prices. They might have that they had three thousand dollars in labor and, you know, two thousand dollars in equipment. That's typically how they break stuff down and look at stuff. They kinda look at it from their cost, you know, to do it.
Sure.
And Brett, I wanna ask a question, and Brad, does the city have any oversight over like actually making the incision in the pavement? I mean, do you regulate that, or do they just come out and just cut the hole, whatever hole they want to, or how does that?
No, the way the process typically works is they come in and they get a right-of-way permit, and like I said, that's the opportunity for us to get all their contact information as well as getting their insurance and make sure that they have a current bond with the city. Generally, they will have the right-of-way technician come out before they actually cut the street, and, you know, they'll get an agreement of what the size of the patch has to be, so they know exactly what they need to remove, you know, pavement-wide, and then...
The direction of the line even? I mean, would they, how would they know that?
Well, we work with them and provide that information to them. If they have a question where the city sewer is located, or where we think the lateral is located, if we've got that information available, we can share that with them and do. And then, you know, they'll go ahead and remove the pavement, excavate down. Generally, at that point, the plumbing inspector's gonna come out, and he actually checks the pipe work and verifies that the pipe was installed in accordance with state plumbing standards as well as city standards, and then the right-of-way inspector will be back again after they backfilled the pipe to verify that the backfill was done properly, and then, you know, to check to make sure that the concrete is replaced according to city standards, reinforcements installed where necessary, and, you know, that we have a high-quality pavement patch when we're done.
And Aaron, did you have a question?
Yeah, first, I wanna follow up on a little bit of what Mike's line of questioning. My question was, is there a list of reputable fair contractors who are not encouraged to inflate their prices, that you could create a list so that you can say, "Look, these are the recommendations for the homeowners to go to, or these are the people that we recommend that you call," who have given us a fair price on something? Because if there's one company that can do this exact same job and do a good job for forty-five hundred dollars, then there's no way we should pay somebody else seven thousand dollars to do it, right? So, I mean, if fifty-two people have participated in the program, we have to have some data that shows, here are the companies that do it for this amount, and here are the companies that do it for that amount. Do we have that?
Well, we always encourage people to get at least two or three quotes, 'cause sometimes you'd be surprised. We don't recommend specific companies, per se, you know, we can provide a person with all the lists of the contractors that do the work in the area, but, I mean, I don't think it's probably our place as, you know, being representative of the city to recommend one specific contractor over the other. Like I said, we really encourage people to get multiple quotes if they can.
But it's public information, if you, if someone gave you a call and said, "Here's the issue that I have, I know about the program," and asked you guys to provide a list of contractors who have done the work over, do you even keep that list?
Yes, we do have a list like that.
Okay, so then you have the, also, how much they charged each individual then?
That we don't typically provide to people, what the, what the costs are. I mean, we can provide them contact information for the sewer contractors, but generally, we haven't provided any sort of rating or, you know, what their average cost of their repair is.
Well, also, sorry to add to Brad, each repair, you know, each instance is very different. Some people may have to cross the entire street, which would be, you know, forty feet worth of pavement, six feet wide. We have also had repairs where they just do the curb and gutter right in front of the house, or just two sidewalk panels, so providing that information without all of the appropriate quantities and unit prices, which we don't really get from the contractors very easily, it may be misleading to say this contractor charged so much money versus this contract, you know, a different contractor charging so much money for a sewer repair, just a generic.
I guess I'm just advocating for, and understanding, because if we're going to have a program like this and pay out the money for individuals to ease the burden, we don't want the burden to just be shifted, right? You know, we actually want to actually ease the burden on the homeowner, right? So we don't want somebody just adding five thousand dollars, 'cause they're gonna get five thousand from us, and then turn around and charge the homeowners the same price that it really cost, right? So, we would have to gather that data in some form or fashion, so that we can at least inform the homeowner who calls and say, "Hey, look, over the past five years or whatever, these are the people that have, that have done this work, that have done it from forty feet to sixty feet or whatever," and then let them make the decision from there. I do understand your point, though, about not advocating or trying to promote particular businesses or something like that, but trying to have as much information as possible so that we don't pay more than we're supposed to and we actually create a, to ease the burden on the homeowner. So, I don't know what it would take for you guys to collect that information, is there a way to collect that information?
Yeah, there is, and we're actually gonna present some options, or one option in particular that may, in a way, address some of those concerns.
Okay, so if that's coming, I did have a couple of other questions that you could probably answer at some point or throughout the presentation. Is the, is there a way, for instance, to look at, because we all know that Dr. Underwood and Bishop and several other folks have been coming here from Dr. Ellis Subdivision for years, saying the same thing. Is there, how many of those fifty-two people participated from? Anyway, I was trying to figure out how many, do you have an idea of how many of those people participated in that program?
Yeah, we keep track of all the addresses. I don't know if we have that available tonight, but we can get that to you.
Just trying to get an idea of what, and what are the primary concerns that you see in a situation like this? Is it roots, or is it collapsed pipes? What do you see usually in this situation?
Well, as far as the sanitary sewer lateral goes, it can be anything from, roots typically can be cut out, but if there is so much root intrusion, typically that is a sign of deficient pipe, or broken or poor joints, so we do see a lot of pipes that just need to be replaced, because they're full of everything, and then, or just pipes that break down because of insufficient backfill. The, the main purpose of this program is not to pay for any of those pipe repairs, though. This is solely for reimbursing people for the cost of the pavement, but as far as the sewer lateral repairs go, we, I don't, we don't really keep track of what's causing each, each breakdown or the need for each replacement as part of this program.
Okay, thanks. All right, we also had one individual from the audience who wanted to participate.
Can we finish our presentation?
Oh, okay. Oh, right, keep going.
Okay.
I thought you were done.
Oh, sorry. So, we have a few, just tables here. This is a brief overview of the funds distributed per year since the beginning of the program in 2008, so it totals almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over those nine years. And then, there's a lot of information, both of the next, of this table and then the one on the next slide are in the memo that you should have received. But this shows a shift in the pavement cost. The first section there is the, these are broken down by the different ordinances. The middle one is that, that three-month ordinance, and in 2013, it's a small sample size, so we'll mainly focus on the first and last. The, the first shows that we had twenty-six reimbursements, twenty-one of which the pavement cost was less than five thousand dollars. During that program, a six thousand dollar pavement replacement would have warranted the full reimbursement, but over eighty percent of those were still less than five thousand dollars. So then, in, under the newest revision of the ordinance, we saw a shift to almost sixty percent of the reimbursements were, or the cost of the pavement replacement were over five thousand dollars, because, and we, it's likely linked to the fact that there was now a five thousand dollar maximum reimbursement available. So, then, this is a breakdown of the average cost of each pavement replacement per year. These numbers have been adjusted for inflation, so we see that the average under the first ordinance was almost forty-one hundred dollars, and then there's a shift under the most recent ordinance, an increase of almost five hundred dollars or thirteen percent. So, again, that's, displays an increase in the cost of the pavement replacement that can be correlated to a change in the reimbursement maximum. So then we have three options that we've put together for revisions or updates to this program. Option one being no action, no revisions will be made, we'd stick with the one hundred percent reimbursement with a five thousand dollar maximum. We haven't received many complaints, people are generally happy to get that, or homeowners at least are generally happy to get that reimbursement, and contractors are aware of it, so they're happy too. But, as we pointed out, there may be some flaws with that. Option two, as we see an increase in the cost of these pavement replacements, or pavement repairs, it may be time to look at increasing the maximum reimbursement and keeping it at a hundred percent of the cost. Again, as we've talked about, this would assist with those higher, higher-cost reimbursements, but may not fix some of the issues with the program. And then, option three, would be a unit price reimbursement. This is something that we've looked at preliminarily, we haven't developed any prices, per se, but the idea behind this would be the city would reimburse for the cost of pavement repairs based on unit prices for construction items, so street pavement, curb and gutter, sidewalk, traffic control, unit, or item, or construction items like that. We would determine the prices, the unit prices based on historical data and other contracts and bids that we see on various projects through the city, or through the Public Works Department, and under this program like this, the reimbursements will be proportional to the amount of work done, not the cost of the work done, 'cause, you know, we've seen through our, throughout the history of the program that those things can vary. And then, the unit price reimbursements would allow for a higher maximum reimbursement or possibly eliminating the max, the cap altogether, because the budget might work out such that the, where we were paying five thousand dollars for a few sidewalk panels, the city would instead be paying less for those and more for the people, or for the repairs that actually do cost more money. So, under this program, the city's right-of-way technician that already is inspecting this work would also record quantities, and that would be part of the application process. So we'd be able to field verify these quantities, and we would no longer be relying on contractors to report the cost of the work, and sometimes not even the, the unit prices or quantities. And so this would also help people that, that need, or whose sanitary sewer main is further away from the house, further across the street. So with that, I guess we'll leave it up to discussion or any other questions that you have.
Okay, Mer pressing?
Yeah, you say you would talk about the amount of work done, not the cost of the work. How do you measure the amount?
Well, I guess the quantities would be the quantities for those construction items.
You mean like how much concrete or something like that?
Correct.
Are there some jobs that would be more difficult, even if it's the same amount of concrete between the two jobs?
As far as road pavement goes, the city does have right-of-way standards that dictate certain dimensions, as far as minimums, and then maximum for street patches, but I suppose there may be accentuating circumstances in some, some cases where they, there may be more work done than would be included in that quantity. that quantity.
So Champagne does it this way? Uh, how long has Champagne used this system?
I think for quite some time, at least since two thousand eight.
Okay, because when we started our revisions, we were paying more than Champagne and we went even higher.
Well, we still are. Our program is much more generous than Champagne. Champagne-
Okay.
-is a unit price, but they only reimburse up to three thousand dollars. So we reimburse up to five thousand. So we have a more generous program than Champagne's.
Okay, thank you.
Charlie?
Yeah, uh, Justin.
Mm-hmm.
Brad, how much, uh, if you were to do the unit price, uh, reimbursement, how much would that cost in terms of new staff time and, and that sort of thing?
Um, the, the data, the historical data, um, from this program is already there. I mean, we already, we've put it together somewhat for this, um, presentation, so we have, uh, that information as well as being able to go out and measure some of these repairs as they were done, um, you know, like the one shown in the picture, uh, to get those quantities. And then we also have, uh, contracts, um, through the city for sewer repairs, and so that would be another resource that we have for, um, determining some of those unit prices.
And can you, can you use, uh, Champagne's numbers as well?
Yes, that would be another resource.
And we would probably talk to the local sewer contractors and excavators and coordinate the unit prices with them to make sure they matched up with what their, you know, anticipated costs were to as a reality check.
So you view this as a fairer system? Okay.
Correct.
So, all, all, you know, under this system, we just simply have to decide whether there's an upper cap or not?
Right, and that would, um, depend on, um, kind of comparing, uh, some of the work that's been done in the past, uh, in, I think it was two thousand, uh, sorry, uh, two thousand twelve, we had nine reimbursements. Actually, in two thousand thirteen, we had eleven, so, uh, but in two thousand sixteen, we had three. Um, so it, it is something that's somewhat variable year to year. Uh, we did see a downturn last year. I don't think we've had any applications yet this year. But the, so the forty thousand dollars that we budgeted each year hasn't been exceeded, and then we, uh, we don't, we're not building that, um, budget up each year. But the idea is that, um, based on, you know, preliminarily, at least, based on what we've seen in the past, that that would balance out, um, for the budget.
Okay.
Okay, then Eric and then Bill.
So, as I, as I'm looking at your, uh, presentation slide, I think you're not envisaging a cap on this. You're just saying you're going to look at what has to be done. You're going to say this is a fair price for it based on the materials and labor to do that much pavement, and that, that's the level of reimbursement.
Ideally. Um, now, if we dug more into it and looked at unit prices and, and compared that to work that's been done in the past and found that it would be more likely to exceed that forty thousand dollars budgeted each year, then we may have to, um, institute some sort of maximum reimbursement or cap. Or that could be based on what we see as the, uh, the, um, a higher possible cost. Um, if we take, uh, a situation where someone would be crossing an entire forty-foot wide street and include sidewalk and curb, maybe that would be a situation where we say, you know, this is what we'd pay for, uh, reimburse for, rather, and then, you know, that becomes the new cap. And, uh, so, uh, again, that's where we're looking for a little bit of guidance. If, if this is something that we want to look into more, then we would, uh, put that information together and evaluate it.
But, but I, I, I am aware that, you know, some people would have to cross a wide street, other people, on the other side of the street, no problem, but to, but typically people don't know that until the problem arises.
Right.
They haven't checked the position of the store, of the sanitary sewer line of the street and adjusted the price they paid for the house accordingly, so, so I think it's, it seems to be a question of whether the, the homeowner is going to have to bear the risk of being unlucky enough to have to cross the street or whether the city will bear the risk. And I guess, I think, since knowing that variable goes beyond ordinary due diligence in buying a house, I'm kind of inclined to think that, that the city should pick up the whole cost.
Diane, you had a, did you raise your hand?
I did.
Okay, I, I, I'll call on you now.
I tend to think this unit price, um, approach is, is a fairer way to do things, and, and if it works right, you might even get more effective repairs, and in other words, you can get a lot more work done, or at least some more work done for the same amount of money. Is that the, that would be the goal of this thing, I would think? And it would provide a way to compare one contractor to the other, too.
Yeah, so contractors would still be welcome to charge whatever they want, um, for, for this repair. Uh, the, the city would only, I mean, we would have a published reimbursement-
Right.
-you know, schedule of prices, uh, and so that would be available. We would want to, uh, not only distribute that to contractors, but also to anybody that, any home-
So a homeowner could say, okay, here's what, here's-
Right.
-here's the city's schedule, what are your, what are your charges?
Right, and so, um, it's, you know, we wouldn't want to make it a, a case where, where, um, you know, keeping the contractors from charging what they want to charge. We want to make it fair for them as well and not be accused of squeezing them. Uh, but at the same time, I think it's in the city's best interest and the homeowner's best interest to, uh, not be subsidizing contractors that, uh, that are looking to take advantage of the program.
Okay. And if I'm remembering right, we had, well, we had extensive discussions about this a few years ago, but is there, there was at that time, back in two thousand thirteen, also a, assistance from another program for low-income homeowners? Is that still around or has that?
Uh, I believe that program still exists through the Community Development.
Yep.
Community Development Fund?
Yes.
Okay, so that's-
There's certain income qualifications you have to-
And that would be, that would supplement whatever was available through here? So they're both available, okay?
Correct.
All right, then Bill, then Erin.
Yeah, I, I think the unit price thing makes a lot of sense, too, and I'd be in favor of raising the, the maximum, um, to maybe cover that case where they'd have to go clear across the street. I guess I'm still a little concerned about how the contractor communicates with the customer as far as how much should be covered. Right now, it's easy. They say it's under five thousand dollars, you won't have to pay for pavement replacement. And I wonder, uh, if it'll be that easy once, um, if we, if we pass this, because they'd have to kind of calculate their costs ahead of time and say, well, the city will reimburse this much, but I really need to charge this much. Will they do that? Will the, will the homeowner know going into it how much the city will be reimbursing?
Well, as, you know, uh, once a contractor is hired, it, uh, would be encouraged for them to get in touch with the city. Um, they alr, already have to get the right-of-way permit, so that could be a preliminary discussion before any of the work begins, um, is, you know, this is what the city is willing to reimburse. These are the extents of the pavement replacement. Um, so, you know, that's a quick calculation of what the reimbursement would be, um, and then that information can be relayed to the, the property owner as well. Uh, you know, in some, in some cases, they might, uh, remove pavement to a certain point and then find out that the main is two feet further, uh, under the, uh, center of the street, and that would require another two feet or so of, of pavement replacement. So, um, I think, you know, in that case, again, we could work with them, um, and, and just try to make sure that we're communicating with contractors and property owners. And, and that is something that we deal or struggle with at times is getting that information out to property owners. Uh, like I said earlier, we always encourage people to contact the city first if they're experiencing a backup, um, and, and that's not always the case, and it, I think it's less often the case that homeowners contact the city first when it comes to, uh, a lateral repair and, um, specifically this program. I think contractors are, uh, tip, are primarily responsible for kind of promoting this program.
Could, could it be made part of the, the, um, permit process, the right-of-way permit process where if they're giving an estimate to the, um, homeowner, that they would have to give both an estimate and what the city would reimburse at the same time?
Well, typically, the right-of-way permit wouldn't be obtained until, or applied for until they have that contract, um, so until they've been hired to do the work. Uh, so, um, we could make it a part of the program, um, that, uh, you know, maybe an informational sheet has to be, uh, given to a resident with the information on the scheduled prices, um, or the unit prices, and just so they're aware, and then maybe an estimate of how much pavement removal and replacement would be needed.
I mean, generally, the contractor's going to do a quick quantity takeoff before they give a price to the, you know, the property owner. So if they have our prices, you know, and they know it's twenty-five, you know, square feet of street pavement they got to take out, I mean, they'll be able to tell the resident how much the city reimbursement will, will be based on that quantity. Now, it's an estimated quantity. Like Justin said, once you get into it, you, you know, might have to go further, you know, make it a wider patch than what initially was anticipated, but I think if we share our, our unit prices with the contractors, they'll be able to give an estimate of what they think the city's reimbursement would be. And hopefully that would match up reasonably close to what their price was.
Just hope they do that, and I, I know they'd probably be able to, and just hope they would be encouraged to do that.
Erin Almond.
So, uh, do you think with this unit system, do, do you think, can you think of any scenario where the homeowner will come out, um, worse than they would if they would have used one of these old systems?
I don't, I'm inclined to say no, just because, um, in cases that are more expensive than the five thousand dollars, this would offer us that opportunity maybe to reimburse for more. In cases where the cost is less than that five thousand dollars, but they're still being charged five thousand dollars, uh, the contractor is getting that money. The homeowner has to, to pay that money first before they are reimbursed by the city. Uh, the city's not paying contractors, the city's paying homeowners. So, um, you know, if they are, uh, say, uh, if they're overcharged for pavement replacement, um, the city is, uh, is going to end up paying that, um, if it's the five thousand dollar maximum.
And so I guess, Bill, is that what you were trying to allude to, that the homeowner would have some sort of way to gauge whether or not this is a fair price or not, or something like that, with the information that you were asking for?
Yeah, I guess just, uh, no going into, if they were going to, um, what their, their actual cost would be. Now they, they know that, you know, the city will pay up to five thousand, but with the new program, it could be, you know, thirty-five hundred and the contractor might be charging a little more. I would assume the contractor would charge pretty close to what our cost estimates are, but there's no guarantee of that, so.
Right, and, oh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Uh, again, um, these situations don't always lend themselves well to, uh, getting bids and comparing, uh, estimates, uh, between contractors, so, um, there might still be a case where the contractor will come out and charge more than, uh, our unit prices, which is, um, definitely their prerogative, but, uh, the, the homeowner would then be, I guess, at, somewhat at their mercy or at the mercy of other contractors being able to respond right away, um, to quickly provide an estimate. Um, so, I suppose if that, if we made sure that information was available to the property owners, um, prior to receiving estimates, then, uh, then that would help them to, to say, okay, this is way off, I need to check with someone else first. Um, but, I, there's, there's no real, I don't know that there's a good way of totally preventing that from, from happening.
So, just a couple of other things. Is this, um, from a development standpoint? Because we've talked about this before, whether it's Dr. Ellis or other places, where the laterals are, the developers are creating this in a subdivision or any particular neighborhood that's being built, where the laterals are running underneath the concrete and the right-of-way and the, the street. Is there any way to avoid that with future developments, or is that just going to be an ongoing problem for us?
Uh, as far as, um, you know, where the, the sewer main falls, uh, in, in a perfect world, from our perspective, the, the city main would be right in the middle of the street. Um, we do have, you know, as mentioned earlier, we have the backyard sewer lines that doesn't require any pavement removal or replacement, and, um, in some cases, those may hold up better. Uh, however, those can be a, uh, those can lead to a much higher expense for the city to make repairs or for homeowners to make repairs to those laterals because of fences and trees and things that are in the, um, backyards that we typically don't find in, uh, in the street or in front yards. Uh, so, uh, from a development standpoint, we really prefer to see the sewer main under the pavement, and then being in the middle of the pavement makes it, um, you know, more even for, uh, for each side of the street. And then, you know, for, for new development, we really try to ensure that, you know, we have standards now that, uh, we use, um, better product, or require the use of better products, um, for these that should last, uh, you know, at least thirty, fifty years before we see any of these issues. So again, we do see more of these problems in, with, in older construction. Um, it's, it's distributed pretty evenly throughout town. Um, I, I think we previously had, uh, shown a map of where we have most of these reimbursements being made, and it pretty well covered, uh, the, um, more established parts of town.
And so, um, when you have someone, I had some similar work done in my backyard, and they put in the PVC pipes and the purple glue to say the roots are not going to be able to eat it up.
Mm-hmm.
I was under the impression that the entire backyard had been done all the way up to the main. I just recently learned that it was not. There's still a section of clay pipe that the tree roots have found their way into, so I had a problem just recently, and I had to c, call somebody out to cut the, the roots out of that.
Mm-hmm.
When a homeowner is trying to hook to the main, uh, from their lateral to the main, is it a necessity for the city to come out and oversee that process, or is it a simple enough process for the private contractor, whoever, to, to hook that up?
Uh, yeah, so anytime, um, i, in a backyard, uh, it's not considered right-of-way, but the city does, um, own a utility easement, typically about ten feet wide centered on that, um, sewer main. So, anytime work is being done, um, especially when connecting to that, uh, sanitary sewer, uh, it is requirement, or a requirement to get the right-of-way permit. Um, so, those are harder for us to catch because we're not often, um, going through people's backyards, but, uh, we still, you know, if we become aware of that work, then we'll make sure that someone has obtained a permit for that. So we should know about that, and then we would have a record of, you know, if that connection was made, um, to the main, or, uh, I think, you know, if, if it is up within five feet of the house, like Brad said, then it becomes a plumbing issue, too, and there'd be a plumbing permit required.
There'd be a plumbing permit for any work in the backyard. Any, any work on your lateral will require a, a plumbing permit. So, the plumbing inspector would have to come out and inspect it.
Thank you.
Okay, um, are we all caught up on? All right, so let's have, um, yeah, Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood and Bishop King James Underwood come and make their comments at this time.
Would you give it on my definitions before we read these, the definitions?
Oh, sure. Uh, that one?
The first definition you had, the interceptors in the sanitary sewer, yes, thank you, sir.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
To our mayor and city council persons. We wanted to speak, um, today, um, uh, before we had an opportunity, so we only have five minutes, do we have five, five? See, you should have put, filled one out for you and one out for me, right?
Keep going.
Before we had an opportunity to see this, there are people in the community, so I hope y'all still up watching. Uh, they thought this was Dr. Ellis Drive concern, but I want to make sure, uh, after we talk, and I'm talking tonight, uh, this is not the Dr. Ellis Drive concern because of the fact that they haven't reached our concern. And not, and I'm sure none of this assistance has reached any of our people, uh, in Dr. Ellis. Uh, we did bring the concern here, uh, in the beginning, um, but our concern, Bishop, you're going to have to help me with the terminology here. The sanitary sewer lateral pavement, I'm looking, reading from- sewer lateral pavement, I'm looking, reading from, uh, the memorandum, sanitary sewer lateral pavement reimbursement program update, uh, our people didn't get any of this money. Once they brought, uh, this, uh, information, and they decided on this one thirty-eight to seven, two thousand seven, two thousand thirteen, two thousand twelve and all this, I'm sure that our people, uh, and I've talked to some of them, though, they've not received any of this. But, uh, I guess the point I wanted to make is that hopefully, pretty soon, we'll get all of our material together, and the people we're trying to get, uh, to assist us, we'll be able to bring our concern here to the council. Because, um, uh, uh, I, I had written something here, uh, to state that, uh, our concern, uh, this concern does not cover, uh, and the reason being, Bishop, uh, is that the misplacement, uh, of the lateral in our community way back in the sixties.
Mm-hmm.
And the inequity, is that a good word that I could use?
Yes.
Uh, uh, of, from, going from our side, it's like, we live on the south side, right? Uh, we live on the south side?
Yes.
All the way over across the street into somebody else's sidewalk, we have to tear it up, and then, uh, tell them what we have to do. So, it's not like this little stuff here. It's, uh, the Dr. Ellis Drive, it's inequity, all, everything we have to do, tell them about that quickly, 'cause we don't have as much time. We'll come back at a different time. So, we can, we, they know all about this from way back when Robert Lewis was on there. But this, that was being concocted here, does not address our concerns in Dr. Ellis, and we have not been helped. Okay.
Okay. Um, what I was concerned about is, uh, what I saw on the slide was, uh, the, it was showing from, that, that the ladder was in the center of the street, and it showed that, uh, it was, it was, the street was on, they only went halfway. But ours is a different situation, is that we have to take, tear up our sidewalk, tear up the street, and tear up the other person's sidewalk to get to the lateral, and it's, that, that's very expensive. And, 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 uh, if somebody buy a home, uh, if they have something happen, and they're, they're not gonna be able to live in their home-
You have one minute.
...because, uh, the expenses is too high.
You have one minute. Give us some more time, somebody.
When you run out of time, we'll give you more time, but you haven't run out yet. Keep going.
So, if, if, if we have to do all that, that means the person on the south side of the street has to pay a lot more. The lateral is in, in the person on the north side of the street, so all they have to do is, uh, dig from their house and, and a little bit in their yard, and they hit the lateral. So, if we saying, saying from the house to the tee, it, it, it's inequity. Because, uh, if, if it was from the house to the sidewalk, it would be equal for, for both people on, on each side. But, uh, the way it's set up, it, it, it's, it's not fair.
And Bishop, the situation also is unique, and there were anomalies in the beginning. So, we, we'll just talk some other time, uh, when we get all our materials together. We're in the process now of, uh, uh, getting some people. It's been very difficult, because we were unable to get university people-
Madam Kirk, would you please turn that off?
...to assist us in this endeavor. Uh, like the, uh, uh, planning, we went to the planning people.
All right, we're gonna give them, we're gonna give them one more minute.
I'll give a little more time.
You know, and I, I've sat here, now, don't get me started. Okay, let's go, Bishop. We'll do it some other time.
So, what we're saying, we are, it, it, it's cause, if, if you bind into a sub, a certain subdivision, and you think that, that you're, uh, buying a house and, and you are in good shape, and then, when something happened, uh, then you have to pay an awful lot to try to maintain, and, uh, the, the sense, we have to go across the street, which is the city's right-of-way. And I'm, I'm thinking that, uh, when the city, anything goes wrong, the city says that's their right-of-way, but then when it comes responsibility of taking care of the right-of-way, then it goes back to the homeowner, because the, the ordinance that, that, that was set up says that the homeowner has to be responsible for the hookup from the house to the tee. And the tee could be, uh, uh, two miles away. And, and that means that the homeowner has to tear up all this stuff in order, uh, order, in order to get to the tee. So, it, it, it's not fair. And, and, and we, we're standing and saying it's not fair, and we want things done more fairly, uh, uh, because we are, uh, paying a lot that we shouldn't be paying.
All right, so we have, uh, some questions of equity, and, um, I'm sure we can probably come to a resolution on that. Charlie, do you wanna make a comment?
Yeah, I, I think you're gonna like the direction we're about to take, 'cause I, I think I sense a direction of the council here that may answer most of your questions here. So, if you'll, let me make a, a motion here, um, see if it addresses it, the, the-
As it's a presentation, we can only recommend-
Well, no, but they're asking, the staff is asking for direction.
Correction, yeah.
So, so one of the, the third option that they presented tonight is one that is based on unit costs, and can be set up so that it would cover from sidewalk to sidewalk in those special cases. And I think that's what, uh, Justin Swinford was addressing, was that if we go to this unit pricing setup, then we have that option of paying the city's cost of repairing the right-of-way, which is the inequity issue here. Uh, so I, I think that, uh, the direction I would like to give staff is to explore that, get us some numbers, and, uh, figure out those costs, and can we do it within the forty thousand dollars a year that we've allocated, or whether we need to go a little further.
Okay, and Eric?
So, the only other, I'd, I'd like to add one little thing to that, which is that for the homeowner, the, there are some additional costs in addition to repairing the right-of-way. That is, there are the costs on, on the, on the lateral itself. So, I don't know how those break out. I don't know how much typically, uh, the costs for, uh, you know, repairing the lateral, uh, itself. So, if, if, and, and so if the, if staff, and I know that's, that typically it's the homeowner who bears that, but if we could get some reading on what, you know, the homeowner can expect for that, then we can also see, in addition to the, um, in addition to the pavement repair that your, that your comment addresses, uh, whether there's, uh, how much is the additional inequity in terms of repairing the lateral itself?
Yes, Michael?
Well, I understand the thrust of what, um, the staff is suggesting here, but it's not gonna come as a surprise to anyone that I'm not a fan of the government setting rates for, uh, a business's work. I think a more competitive and a more fair, and frankly, a more equitable way to skin the cat is to, uh, require these businesses to publish their unit rate, uh, with the city, or I'm sorry, to submit their unit rate with the city. That's gonna force a competitive, uh, price, uh, on a regular basis. That rate has to be published and honored, and then in the city, then the city can go out and verify, uh, the number of units that need to be, uh, that need to be resurfaced, and therefore, the, the customer knows upfront, basically, what's going to be reimbursed, based on the rate. Also, that's a way, just like we find our trash haulers. The city publishes the rates of trash haulers so we can call around. Of course, we have a little more time to do that, 'cause, you know, the trash isn't overflowing. But, I just, I think another thing that we ought to seriously consider here is to, uh, require these folks to publish their rate, and, uh, that will generate some, uh, some, some fair prices and competition.
Okay, that's a good comment. So, the suggestion is to pursue, um, item number three?
Yeah.
Second. Was that a motion?
Yeah, essentially.
Second.
It's just a, a, it's a, it's a motion to staff to pursue option three, yeah.
Yeah, so we're giving direction to staff. Is there an agreement? Do people wanna raise their hand or indicate by saying aye?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, we seem to be in that general-
I, I don't know if we offered the clarity of the cost of the actual laterals themselves, and I don't know if we've actually implemented or asked staff to do what Mike was just suggesting. So, I'd like some clarity on this motion slash not motion thing that we're doing.
I guess staff, I think staff would probably be-
Staff has heard.
No, we can, we can research both those items, Mr. Compton, member Madigan's, and bring that to you, as well as what the, what the non-paintment, the cost of the pair of, we can bring this back to you.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna try to address, really, everything that we've asked about.
Okay.
All right, good, let's make some progress on that. All right, let's go on into the, uh, next section, staff report. Will there be any tonight? Oh, yes, okay, mayor pressing.
Well, we have some good news. Um, UC Bank is gonna spend one and a half million dollars to renovate their building, and they're gonna bring fifty new employees to the downtown.
Yay.
So, we have five other things that are going on right now. Um, Strawberry Fields and World Harvest are gonna merge and renovate, and we have a brewery, um, being constructed on the Boneyard, and we have renovation of four oh one North Broadway into the Broadway Market, and we have a two and a half million dollar renovation of the Cohen Building, and then we have the ongoing res, renovation of the Stevens Building. So, it's good to see people investing in downtown Urbana.
Yay. Any other staff report at this time? All right, uh, let's go-
Resolution, two thousand seventeen oh three oh one eight R, resolution approving an easement agreement with the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois, and this is on Oregon Street between Gregory and Lincoln. Bill Gray, is he gonna produce that?
Yes, thank you. Um, I think council's aware, uh, currently we're out for bids for street lighting replacement around the Cranert Arts Center, and, uh, one critical component to the project is having a streetlight controller that would provide electricity for the lighting. Uh, we recently received back from the university an approved easement, which is attached in the packet tonight. This is, um, the, the language that would grant an easement whereby we could, uh, occupy city property to connect to the power pole, which is an Ameren power pole on the north side of Oregon. So, um, this is the last bit of detail, and, uh, we hoping, we will be opening bids later this week, so hopefully we have good prices, and we wanna move forward with the streetlight construction work.
Charlie?
It's a no-brainer for me. I would be sentenced to counsel with recognition for approval.
I'll second that. Is that battle of the words, uh, give that to Eric, I guess, yes?
Take a vote.
Yeah, any, any discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, send that to council with approval. Next ordinance number two thousand seventeen oh three oh one six, an ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter twenty, concerning the use of right-of-way. And this is authorized, authority to enter into a, executive, a right-of-way use license. And again, Brad?
I'll, I'll try to keep it, uh, short and sweet. This was, if you remember, you recently passed some revisions to the right-of-way ordinance that dealt with the smart cell technology, and part of the, the ordinance not related to the smart cell was giving the, uh, mayor administrative authority for underground utilities, to approve the license agreements for those, since we get so many of those in. Well, I apologize, we did not do a particularly great job of crafting the, the language for that section, so it was, there wasn't a lot of clarity as far as what the mayor could approve versus what had to still go through council. So, what you have before you tonight is a rewrite that we hope makes it clearer, um, that, that anything that was above ground aerial or on the surface of the ground would still have to go through council for approval. So, that's what the language you have before you is.
Okay, other questions? Yes, Diane Marlin?
I was just gonna move ordinance number twenty seventeen dash zero three dash zero one six to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Third.
Was that Charlie, or what? Okay. All right, then, Bill Brown, do you have a question?
Um, yeah, I, I think one big difference between having the mayor approve it and having it go through city councils, that there's no public notice about what's going on. Um, and I assume this is all public information that could be FOIA'd. So, could we just put, make a section on, on the website that says newly approved right-of-way permits and, and list them, like we do building permits?
We could do that. We do have a, a right-of-way webpage, where we keep the applications and stuff. Um, the other thing we could do is post it as a, a news alert when they're getting ready to, to do construction.
If we could just keep a listing like we do building permits, so people could look at, like, the last year if they wanted to, or something like that, I think that would be good.
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, that's a good comment. Anybody else? Eric, did you have a-
No, no, I'm good with this.
All right. Um, those in favor of, uh, sending this forward to council with approval, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? Okay, that goes forward.
Thank you.
Now, we have a discussion on I-DOT.
All right, so I've got a couple of things to go over tonight. Um, first, I wanted to talk about how busy we've been for the first, first part of the year. Um, we added the beyond-scope checkbox to the traffic tickets so that officers can indicate whether they have questioned, um, the driver beyond the scope of whatever is occurring during the, um, the, the IVC violation. Um, we published a summary of the twenty eleven to twenty sixteen Urbana Police Department activities that is up on our website. Um, we've worked on some data quality improvements for drivers and accidents, and we went back and kind of backfilled in some information, and we figured out that it was, um, that a small percentage were, were not being tracked correctly, and they will be tracked correctly moving forward. Um, submitted all of the twenty sixteen UCR data. We officially selected a crime mapping program in February, and it was installed on my computer last week. Um, the configuration of the data and the data imports will hopefully be done, um, next month, so then I will be able to start really doing some spatial analysis. Um, updated the accident benchmark, including the twenty sixteen data, and I've been working since the first part of the year with several professors, um, from the University of Illinois, and we collaborated on a grant application for the National Institute of Justice, um, to examine, do a study on hotspots policing and the impact on citizens within the area where police resources are directed. Um, so that was submitted on Thursday, and it's typically a six-month, um, decision before, before we'll know. But, um, and then, actually, today, we got the open data portal up, um, with all of the traffic stop data for the last several years. Um, so that is on Urbana's open data portal website. Coming up, I've got, um, a week-long training in Indianapolis. We'll be doing the configuration and training on the crime mapping program, and on an ongoing basis, we've been collaborating with the FBI, um, with some U of I professors, and with, um, the Fresh Start Project specialists to help fill in some of the, the data. All right, so tonight, what we're gonna talk about is the traffic stop data, and as an overview, um, we're gonna do the updated benchmark, and then comparing the five-year average to twenty sixteen data, and then an introductory quarterly dashboard. Um, I was able to pull everything through last Friday, and then I can do the full quarterly, um, update when it, the quarter is completed in April. Okay, I'm gonna do kind of a statistics overview, because I don't like to simply compare twenty sixteen to twenty fifteen, because that doesn't tell the whole story. So, what I like to use is, and what it's typically used is called the Z-score, and that accounts for variation across years. Um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna walk through a couple of examples on, on why this is important to not just consider what's happening in, in one year or even looking one, one year back. So, in twenty sixteen, we had two hundred and eighty-four burglaries. By itself, that number means not a lot more than we had two hundred and eighty-four burglaries. So, how do we know, is that higher, is it lower, is it, is it significantly higher or lower? So, if I said we had sixty-five more burglaries than in twenty fifteen, and that's a twenty-two point eight nine percent increase, that sounds kind of alarming. However, in twenty eleven to twenty fifteen, we had an average of three hundred and nine, so in twenty sixteen, we had eight percent fewer. And so, this is what the, the graph looks like. So, in twenty eleven, we had pretty high, higher in twenty twelve, and then it continues to drop, and then it goes back up a little bit in twenty sixteen. So, what the Z-score does is it considers the standard deviation. So, that takes the average, and then looks at each of the points and how far it is from, from the average. So, our standard deviation for twenty eleven to twenty fifteen is fifty point eight nine. So, we're looking at the- So we're looking at the average of 309, plus or minus about 50. So that's, that's our range that we're looking at. So the question is then, what is 2016? How does that fall within that range? Our Z-score is negative point five. What we're looking for is anything that's outside of one standard deviation from the mean. So that's telling us that our 2016 data is like half below. So if the Z-score is one or above, or one or lower, that's something that's significant. And that, those are the things that we really want to pay attention to. Another example is assault. So we had 77 assaults in 2016. We had nine fewer than in 2015, which is a 2.6% decrease. However, our average from 2011 to 2015 is 93. So we've got actually a 17.6% decrease. So you can see that we, we really peaked in 2014, but then we're continuing on a downtrend here. So our standard deviation is 12, gives us the Z-score of negative one. So that means that when we're considering the past five years and the fluctuations in crime across that, assaults are significantly down in 2016 than they were in the past five years. So this is what I do with the, with the traffic stops, this is what I do in the annual report that I referred to. This is better than just looking at, think, here's what we did in 2016 compared to 2015, because it considers a more complete picture and the natural fluctuations in, in incidents. So, traffic stops. 2016, we had 30, I think 33, 15, traffic stops slightly below the five-year average, not outside of what we would expect. Our Z-score was, it didn't hit the, the threshold of the one. For step, however, we had, we did more step stops last year as a percentage of all of our traffic stops than we, than we had done in the past. And I did some more digging into that, and I worked with Sergeant Charles and Cassie upstairs, and we figured out the step budget is typically the same, but the number of hours that officers work is different. And that's just an administrative function. So the number of step stops has a higher variation across years, but that's correlated with the number of office, or the number of hours that officers are working. So overall, in 2016, we conducted fewer traffic stops, and of the traffic stops that were conducted, more of them were step stops than non-step stops.
And step is selected traffic enforcement?
Yes, yes. So in traffic stops by race across years compared to our accidents by race across years. And these are the, the figures that we use to generate the benchmark. So our traffic stop, we know how many people were stopping. And so what our accidents are doing is comparing it to the number of people, the best guess of the number of, of people by race that are driving on the streets. So we're dividing the traffic stops by the benchmark. And then the numbers closest to one would be the proportional. So here's our disparity ratio across years. You can see that, you know, there's some fluctuation there. Twenty, and then at the bottom, I've got the chart that compares 2016 to the five-year average, and then also looking at the Z-score. So while there is some difference in 2016, none of it raises to the level of significance that it's, it's not significantly different than what, what we've seen in the past. So we've still got a lower ratio than what we would expect for Caucasians, and a higher than what we expect ratio for African-Americans, and then just about one for Asian, and a little bit higher for Hispanic. Some of these are low numbers, so some of these should, should really be interpreted with caution, particularly Hispanic drivers. We, we stop a very low number of Hispanic drivers compared to other races. So looking at the disparity ratio in step versus non-step stops. So the selective traffic enforcement program, the patrol areas are decided by a sergeant. It is based on input from multiple stakeholders. Most frequently, step patrols are focused on traffic infractions that have the potential to lead to an accident. So this means that officers are patrolling in an area that is nondiscretionary, and they have less discretion on the reason to stop, but it's important to note that there's still discretion as to which cars are stopped. We see less disparity in step stops than non-step stops. So the, the yellow line is the one on each of them. And so the, the non-step stops have a higher, the, the, the step stops are more tightly clustered toward the line, the, the non-step stops have more variation in the, in the disparity ratios. So the question then is, you know, the non-step stops are stops that officers make where they are patrolling at their discretion, while patrolling in their assigned beats. So at our next quarterly update, what I hope to present to you is the results of spatially mapping these things. So overlaying the location of the non-step stops with occurrences of serious crime, and then census demographics to better understand the disparity. And something else I'd like to do with the mapping, I've met with Sergeant Charles, and we have some innovative ideas about how I can be helpful in his decision-making by providing some different, different types of maps looking at accidents. So looking again at the Z-scores. For the step stops, we decreased in disparity ratio in Caucasians, so we, our five-year average is point nine eight. We went down to point nine three for step. Increased in African-American. We increased our African-American ratio in 2016 compared to the five-year average. Same with Asian and step. These numbers are a lot smaller, though. So when we're looking at the step stops, we're only looking at 31% of our traffic stops. So that ranges from 573 to 1,282 stops total in the 3,500 range. So it's, when you're disaggregating it by the type of stop, and then disaggregating it again by race, you get smaller numbers. So these, these things are, can, can be skewed by, you know, one step that's in a location that has a higher percentage of, you know, Asian or Hispanic drivers are the, the two smaller pools that we have. Okay, so the motivation for traffic stops. We, this was the recommendation from the IDOT task force. We started collecting it in May 2015. There were inconsistencies. So the data from, from this is all of 2016, which is the full first year that we can say are pretty consistent. So about 75, 72.5% are for traffic issues, 23% are for community caretaking, and 4% are for targeted patrol. I've broken that down by race over here, and it's, it's fairly equally distributed. And then, yeah. And then looking, I don't have, I don't have previous data for this, because this was the first year that we did it, so I can't do a historical comparison. So this is just, this is the data from the first year, and this is, this is as we have it. So for the reason for stop for, for 2016 compared to the previous years, you can see that overall, we stop about 73% for moving violations, 18% for equipment violations, and then 8% for license and registration violations. And it, it varies a bit by race, but it's still pretty, I mean, it's, you know, we're stopping more people for moving violations than we are for equipment violations. We're stopping more people for equipment violations than we are for license and registration violations. I have that broken down by year over here. And again, this is the same problem as we have with the step. It's, because it's, it's got the low baseline numbers. So the, the moving violations are going to be the ones that we can put the most weight behind. When we get down to equipment violations and license and registration violations, we're looking at, for example, for Hispanic drivers, 159 were stopped for equipment violations. Or no, Hispanic drivers were 4.8% of stops. So 159 Hispanic drivers were stopped in 2016, and 20 drivers were stopped for equipment violations. So that's less than 1% of all stops that we see here. So even though it's a, it's a negative 2.73 Z-score, it should be interpreted with caution, because we're only looking at 20 traffic stops over the entire course of the year. So the, the moving violations are going to be the ones that we can, we can look at with the most, the most weight behind it. So we can see that we stopped more African-Americans for moving violations than we did in 2011 to 2015, and then more Hispanics for moving violations than we did in 2011 to 2015. And then that's reflected in fewer African-Americans that we stopped for equipment violations and for license and registration violations. Looking at the motivation, reason, and outcome of stops. So we've got distinct differences when we look at the different motivations. So looking at traffic issue, moving violation, probably getting a ticket. Traffic issue and equipment violation, more likely to get a warning. And then a traffic issue for a license and registration violation, it's more likely to result in a more serious outcome, but it's still, you've got lots of tickets, lots of warnings. For community caretaking across the board, you're more likely to get a warning regardless of, for the community caretaking motivation for stop. If the reason is a moving violation and equipment violation, or a license and registration violation, warning tickets are the most common outcome. And then looking at the targeted patrol motivation for stop, there's some more variation here, but we, for moving violations, you're still more likely to get a ticket, kind of the same, equally distributed with the tickets and warnings, and then more for the more serious here. But then I, again, want to caution you with the size. So this is, this is broken down by the percentage of each of these stops, so we can, we can kind of compare across. However, this is when we look at how many drivers that we stop. So most of the people that we're stopping are for traffic issue, moving violation. We have a lot fewer numbers that we're stopping here. So when you're looking at the, I'll pull it out here. So yeah, 20% of equipment violations for targeted patrol resulted in something more serious than a traffic violation. But that big red there is three cases out of 14 stops. So we only did 134 targeted patrol stops in, in 2016. So interpret with caution. And looking at race and outcomes of traffic stops. There's, there's, there's variation here. So Asians, about 52% get a citation, 50, 55% of African-Americans get a citation, 66% of Hispanics get a citation, and 58% of Caucasians get a citation. We also see variation across warnings, and then also variation with the things that elevate to something that's more serious than a moving violation. Looking at the Z-scores, the Asian numbers are very low, and actually over here, we only had one Asian that resulted in something that was more serious than a traffic violation, so I don't report that at all. But we, we see more citations than in the past, in 2016 for Asian drivers, I'm sorry, fewer for Asian drivers, more citations for African-American drivers, insignificant amount for Hispanic, and then fewer citations for Caucasian drivers than we had in the past. When we're looking across the board, then, we see fewer, yeah, fewer Caucasians that get warnings, and then more that are elevated to more serious than traffic violations. So this is, these are presenting the disparity ratios. So, back up, I should have started with this. We know how many people were stopping. So this is, that is the baseline, is the, the percentage breakdown of the drivers that we're stopping compared to what the outcomes of the, of the traffic stop is. So that's, these are solid. There's no guesswork involved here with the disparity ratios. And then a one would be an equally likely, and then anything above one is more likely than we would expect based on the number of drivers that we're stopping, and less than one is less likely than what we would expect based on the, the number of drivers that we're stopping. So we do see some variation here, but it's not, not nearly at the level than what we have for the, for the traffic stops themselves. So this is all pretty close to one. This is all pretty close to one. And then this is a small number of stops, but there is, there's more disparity in the, the traffic stops that elevate to something that's more serious than a traffic violation. And then looking at those that are more serious than a traffic violation. We had 105 of those in 2016, and 44 resulted in arrests. And so here's our percentage breakdown of arrests by race. And then only two of those arrests were for discretionary charges that could have gone either way. Everything else, every other arrest had at least one nondiscretionary charge associated with it. So this is, these are pretty low numbers. And here is my proposed dashboard that I'd like to present quarterly. This will also include the beyond scope, once we get that done. I, I have the, there's not a checkbox entered yet, so we can't, I can't pull the numbers, I'm actually hand-counting it. So we did 36 in January and February. I don't have the March tickets yet, but that's 36 out of, I don't have the number of traffic stops, but it's less than 500. So it's, it's a low, low number that we're doing beyond scope questioning. So for the dashboard, the number of stops, looking at the average of the first quarter of the last five years. So this is controlling for seasonality. I'm not looking at the, you know, the average divided by four. This is, this is January, February, March for the 2011 to 2015. We are right on par with what we've done in the last five years. Our Z-score is, I mean, we're, we're within, you know, seven traffic stops. The reason for stop, quarter one of 2011 to 2015 compared to quarter one of 2017, right on par with moving violations, right on par with equipment violations, and a little bit lower than what we would expect for license and registration violations. And then looking at our disparity ratios for the first quarter of 2011 to 2015 compared to the first quarter of 2017. For African-Americans, our ratio, our five-year ratio is 1.63, and then this year it's 1.5. And that's less than what we would expect based on what we've done in the past. So that's, that's moving in the right direction. For the Hispanic drivers, our five-year ratio is 1.14, and then this year it's 1.1, and that's not, not a significant change. Asian drivers, we're looking at usually 1.05. This year it's been 0.95, not significant. And then for Caucasian drivers, in the last five years, it was 0.82. This year we're looking at 0.88, which is significant. And I know that it's not, these numbers aren't, like, to go from 13, like, 13%, looking at 13%, looking at 6% doesn't seem like it's a, a very big jump, but our numbers have been pretty tightly clustered. So this is, you know, to go, to have a 6% change is significant based on the, you know, the distribution of, of the past data. So that's what I have. I'm open for questions, suggestions on the dashboard, if you have them as well.
Well, let's see, so are there comments or discussion at this point? Yes, Erin?
So, working from the last slide. You're saying that there's still a, so 1.5 is a significant disparity?
It's, it's a significant disparity, so it's 50, so an African-American driver is 50% more likely to be stopped than what we would expect based on our estimated driving population. However, it's also significantly down from where it was over the last five years.
The 0.13 is?
1.63 moving to 1.5 is a significant decrease this year than it had been in the past, but it's still a 1.5. So an African-American is still 50% more likely to be stopped than, than we would expect based on the driving population.
Why?
That's what I hope to answer. So we know that in discretionary stops, the, the disparity is higher, and it could be because that's where the officers are patrolling. So they're patrolling in areas that have more African-American drivers. And are they patrolling there because there's more serious crime there? That's what I'd like to answer. So when I have the ability to overlay these things and spatially analyze them, I would, I would love to answer that question.
That's what we're hoping to have a better answer for you in July, when we have it. We'll actually have it up and running, the mapping system, where she's going to be able to overlay what's going on in the city and be able to track that and understand why. Where are the officers at? Understand where these officers are patrolling and why they're patrolling in those areas. And that'll give us a better answer, and that's what that mapping system that you let us buy is going to help us with. So that's just part of it.
But you, but the police department determines which, which areas you patrol, right? Or does the officer have discretion to just sort of drive wherever they want to go?
There's, there's both. If we see a high, we see a high incidence in crimes going on in a certain area, we'll put more officers in that area, we'll ask them to patrol. Other times, they're allowed to patrol all over the city in different areas. Some areas may be low in crime, but we still want officers to go over to those areas. So if we have situations where we're having a lot of issues in a certain area, yes, we'll have those officers go there. yes, we'll have those officers go there and they'll be assigned to that area. Other times they're allowed to freely roam the city and drive around in their beats. Each officer is assigned a beat. There's five beats in the city. And those officers are allowed to drive anywhere in those beats.
Which is why it's not instructive for me to break down the disparity ratio by officer, because different officers have different beats and the, the different beats have different racial compositions. So that's, yeah.
But so five beats, we usually have how many officers patrolling on a particular, we have three different shifts?
We actually have two. We have one power shift, but that sometimes it depends on personnel issue, I mean, whether we have the officers to cover that shift. That's the power shift that runs from three to three.
Would a citizen sitting at home watching this be safe to conclude that on any given day, we have five, or on a, on a regular day, that we have five officers, one officer patrolling each beat?
We try to do that. Sometimes we're not able to. Sometimes we'll have an open beat, where an officer will cover two beats depending on what we have that day, court injuries, how many officers we have staffed.
Okay. So now going back to, to the presentation, the STEP program versus the non-STEP program. So when you look at this data going forward, you'll look at the STEP program and the non-STEP program, that'll be overlaid over those beats as well. Is there something that you could share about that?
The non-STEP program is going to be overlaid with the beats, because that's where the officers have discretion on the areas that they're patrolling in. They don't get to decide where the STEP patrol is. That's, that's done at a higher level than, than the officer-level decision-making. So that's, you know, Sergeant Charles on the STEP, the Traffic Commission. And we see less disparity in those, in those stops.
Okay, and we also have a, a request from the public too. But Eric, do you want to take your question?
Oh, yeah, I'm just going to say that, that I really do appreciate your, your breaking out the statistical significance of changes, because, you know, unless you had done that, it wouldn't be obvious that, for example, for Asian drivers, change from 1.05 to 0.95, and that this bottom line, the disparity ratio, that's not significant. But a change from 0.82 to 0.88 is because the total numbers that those represent are, are higher and therefore the fractional variance, the random variance is lower. So I, I think that's a really, that's a really, that's a great feature. I, I guess, I don't know if it would make things, clutter things up more or if we just, if we'd make things clearer, if on, on the bars, you put little error, you put little error dashboards.
Yeah, I did that. I think you, you've asked me to do that on one of them before, and I did that. I should have done it on this one too, yeah.
Okay.
And then Erin had his hand up, and then Charlie.
So the, the STEP program, you're saying that it doesn't show a disparity?
It, it depends. Most years it hasn't. This last year, there was more of a disparity. And I've talked to, so in 2015, there was, the only disparity that we had was with Asian drivers. It was, everything was really close to one. There's, there's more of a variation with Hispanic drivers, but again, that's the really low numbers. The African American disparity ratio this year was higher than it was last year and actually in, in many of the years past. And we see that in the, in the Z score here at 2.09. And yeah, so, so we've talked about the, the different locations that the STEP patrols have been in, and we're gonna, we're gonna work on that.
So in essence, for the average person who is just drowning in all of this data that you have presented at this point, when it's all said and done, what you're saying is that whether it's a STEP program or a non-STEP program, there's a disparity for African American drivers?
Yes.
Okay.
It's called a consistent, we're consistent, but there's still a disparity.
Yeah, there's, there's more of a disparity in the non-STEP though. So for a five-year average, not including 2016, but 2011 to 2015, our disparity for African American drivers was 1.19. So an African American driver was 19% more likely to be stopped in a STEP stop than we would expect based on the driving population. When we're looking at non-STEP, they're 80% more likely to be stopped than we would expect based on the driving population. And I hypothesize that that's because of the areas that the officers are patrolling in, but I can't answer that question until I can look at the data.
So for the, the sample sizes, because that gets a little bit confusing to me. Looking at this particular slide about the STEP program, the Caucasian drivers and African American drivers are all legitimate.
We have a big enough.
Sample sizes. The other two, you're saying, look at them with caution?
Yeah.
All right. And so the STEP, the STEP program says that, yes, we're more likely to stop Caucasian drivers almost at a flat one, that they are, according to 2016, they are 0.07% less likely to get stopped or something like that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then in a non-STEP program, it's even less than that?
Yes.
Is there an explanation for that?
Again, I'd like to, to look at the areas where these, these non-STEP stops are made.
So the, the crime mapping piece is what you're going to continue to look at?
Yeah.
To, to see that?
And this is echoed. So, you know, in the STEP stops, it's, it's primarily for traffic issue, moving violation. So when we're looking at those, those have less disparity. And that's collapsed into the STEP. And the ones that are non-traffic issue or non-moving violations have a higher disparity ratio as well. So that's, this is, you know, what we're finding.
So I don't know your correct title anymore. What is your correct?
Lieutenant in Charge of Services.
Lieutenant Fitzgerald. Who determines where the STEP programs are put?
STEP, the Traffic Commission and Sergeant Charles. What they look at is the volume of traffic accidents in a certain area or even complaints. We'll put out the, we have that radar that, that sits out in the street. We'll put in certain areas where we'll check. And we'll see if there's a large proportion of people speeding in a certain area. We'll put, then we'll put a squad car down there, and that's a STEP officer. Say on Lincoln Avenue, for example, if we put that out there, our radar and the checks is showing 20% of the people are going 10 miles or over the limit, then we're going to put a STEP unit out there. At five points, if we see a high concentration of accidents at five points, we're going to put STEP units out there to check for people, whether it's seat belts, red lights, or things like that. So what we do is we take information, we put it together, and we look for the areas where we're seeing a lot of traffic issues, and then we'll put STEP units in those areas.
Okay.
And I'll be able to help with the traffic crash mapping once, once I have the mapping program. And so we can really make sure that you objectively decide where, you know, the traffic crashes are happening and where the, the STEP details should be located.
See, I guess my concern is that when we look at the STEP program, which shows, whatever the data shows there as far as the, the stops is more equitable in the STEP program, although there's still a disparity that exists there. If you get the crime mapping and it shows that, yes, that there's more calls for service or there's more high crime in this particular area and stuff like that. I still don't understand then why from a non-STEP standpoint, why does that automatically mean that I'm going to stop more people in that particular area, right? Just because there's more officers there, you're going to stop more people?
Well, if the officers are pretty proactive in an area and they, and they're, there's more officers in an area. Say if there's more officers on South Laramie, and we have a bunch of officers down there, there's more chance and likelihood of someone being stopped down there if they committed a traffic violation rather than, say, if it's on campus and we only have one officer out there. If you have three officers in an area and they're working in an area, there's likely more chance of someone being stopped for doing a traffic violation rather than one officer in another area of the city.
See, this is where the troubling part comes in for me, because if you're telling me that you're going to have more officers there because it's been an influx of crime or some sort of particular situation, then the focus is on those particular things, not traffic enforcement. So it tells me that the traffic enforcement is now being used to try to gain access to or to do some sort of stop to see if a person is involved in something like that. Is that a logical conclusion?
Not necessarily. If the officers are out there and they're driving around squad cars and someone blows a stop sign, they're not going to ignore that. They're going to stop that person for the stop sign. And most of the traffic stops you see on here, where she listed, are traffic-related offenses. So I would hope our officers aren't doing that just for that. But most of, if they're, if they're out there and they see a traffic violation, they're going to make a stop, whether it's a stop sign, speeding, or some other issue.
And traffic stops aren't, aren't likely to lead to anything more serious than, than a simple traffic ticket. So we, you know, we had 105 traffic stops that were more serious than, than a, a traffic stop, more serious than a, an vehicle code violation. And only 44 people were arrested. I don't, the, the motivation of a, of a traffic stop is for safety and not, not to catch.
Well, I, I don't know if you can make that logical conclusion. Maybe you can from your data. I don't know if I would come to that conclusion, given my experiences, that traffic stops are used for more than just traffic safety. I think everybody would agree with that, if we're being honest. The tickets, the average cost of the ticket, do we have, do you know of like, what would the average cost be for, for?
For a standard moving violation, it's $120. And there's, whether there's court costs with that, it all depends on, it all depends on, well, they roll across the street. But the standard ticket for red light, stop sign, speeding is $120.
So that's what I'm getting at also around when we say that it's a, the disparity doesn't seem to be a whole very high or something like that. But when you start talking about in real numbers, what, what people are having to pay because of the stop or something like that, then it becomes a more, very more, much more real issue for people, especially if you're talking about more lower-income areas, right? So I just, I don't want to dig off into that real deep. I'm looking forward to seeing some of the other information. For me, I just want to make sure that it's, I'm clear about this, that, you know, this particular issue, although we look at all the data, we're going to do all this mapping, and I think you're doing a great job. At the end of the day, what, we're still not explaining these disparities. And the crime mapping itself could show a disparity. So I'll be interested to see exactly how that, that all works out. But thank you.
And we have a, we do have a, one person's been waiting to speak. So why don't we have Daryl Cruz come up and do public input on this? So if you would make room for Daryl, and then you can come back if you have to.
Yeah, you could sit up there with him. I'm sure he would enjoy that.
I've been waiting for this opportunity a long time. Maybe Melissa and I can have a conversation, because I'm intrigued.
Thank you for your patience.
First of all, I would like to ask the UPD if it has the presentation, if it could post it with the agenda ahead of time so the public could have a chance to see it before it's discussed, because after the fact, again, it's pretty difficult to do it. Okay? One thing I wanted to pass out and give you, I just want to make a note, when I talked to you last week, nothing that was presented tonight, it, it refutes what I said last week. In fact, it reinforces it, that in fact, racial disparities in traffic stops have not significantly changed over the last five years. Every action and decision you've made thus far has not made a difference. Okay? You need to remember that fact, okay? The data here that I have listened, well, let me just speak to what's here. First of all, the data that you're collecting is simply police data on traffic stops. There are two parties in traffic stops, the public and the officer. There's two perspectives in the traffic stop, the officer and the public. It is very simple for you to collect public feedback from the driver who stopped regarding that traffic stop to address their perspective, which I have brought up to you months ago. Nothing has been done about it. But I would suggest to you, if we had feedback cards conducted six months ago and the data was here to present with this information tonight, we would know a little bit more than we now do. But we don't have that data. And I kind of outlined that in the note there again. And I would encourage you, just for six months, for like $700, do a feedback and see what the experience of the driver is in that. Okay, regarding the information that was presented tonight, the information is all very good, but it's just as, to me, it's as clear as a crystal ball. The more data I get and the more I read and the more I see of this, it becomes crystal clear. There are basically one of two things happening that are creating traffic stop racial disparities. One of them is officer discretion in choosing to conduct the stop, whether it's intentional or unintentional. The other is the Urbana Police Department is policing neighborhoods differently, for whatever reasons. I would remind you, in 2010, in this study that was done then, there was no correlation in Beat Six between calls of service and crime rates and traffic stops. Okay? One report said there was none already. And I don't think we can ignore that data. Maybe this mapping will help us do it. But the other thing is, if it's true that the disparities are caused because police are present more often in a neighborhood they think has more crime or whatever, then there's a double consequence happening. Because if traffic stops, or IDOT traffic stops are supposed to be conducted fairly and equitably based upon moving violations, licensures, equipment violations, then theoretically, all races would be stopped the same. If we're policing a certain neighborhood different, then, and the result of that is causing over 2,400 more stops on a certain group of people, then that is terribly unfair to that group of people, because it's an unintended consequence of trying to address crime. So in the intent of trying to address crime, they're getting penalized by being stopped more often, not because they're worse drivers than Caucasian drivers or any other group, it's because they're policed differently and a consequence of that. And if that's not the case, then it has to be discretion. It's one of those two things. If you can tell me, it's either because they're policing more as a consequence or officer discretion, whether intentional, unintentional. Diversity training, community outreach, all of the things you have done.
You have one minute, Mr. Cruz.
Will not address either of those two scenarios. Nothing addresses those two scenarios until you find out what you need to do to how to address that. I would simply say the data, when you look at traffic, the, the type of stops, 73% of them are traffic stops for moving violations and stuff. If that is the case, and we have to remember the arrests, and we were told earlier, pretextual stops and investigatory stops, that was used as a way to fight crime or reduce crime. Now we know that less than 2.4% of all the stops result in an arrest. Most of those are because of licensures, DUIs, or a warrant, not because of crime. Traffic stops are not being used effectively to fight crime or to reduce crime in a neighborhood. Rather, crime is causing the disparity, at least the myth of crime, the increase in disparity of stops. It's just the reverse.
Move for more time.
The effect.
Okay, we'll give them another minute.
And so I would suggest to you, simply, yes, keep collecting the data. Look at the data. But it's, it's pretty evident to me, and if anybody thinks the two conclusions I've drawn after 12 years of going through this and seeing the data that we've gotten is incorrect, please do so. So I ask you, start collecting some feedback from the public, at least for a temporary time, to see what their perspective is. And I suggest that, that the information be specific to what you want to get back from that driver. Did they feel the fair, the stop was fair? Were they treated fairly? Was the outcome fairly? Were there questions beyond the stop that officer asked? So you can get that perspective, be included in it. Make it meaningful and useful to help us answer the question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any questions? All right, Erin Evans.
So can we, I think we've discussed this before, about these cards, the feedback cards. Is there any?
Can I just say something about cards, real quick? If you're getting a ticket and the police officer pulls you over to get your ticket and you're getting a ticket, $120, fine, the ticket. What do you think the person's going to come back and say about that officer compared to the officer who stopped someone and just gives them a warning? I understand what you're saying, but you're giving feedback at a ti- I understand what you're saying, but you're giving feedback at a time when someone's getting a citation, whether it's a hundred and twenty dollars. I don't think you're getting a fair assessment on what that person wants to give back at that time on how their service was. So if the officer goes out and gives a warning and says, okay, I'm just stopping, I'm going to give you a warning now, you're going to get, human nature, you're going to get that person to come back and say something better about that officer than the officer who does his job and writes a ticket for someone doing a fifty and a thirty. So it's up to you, up to you, whether you want feedback from the people on doing cards. But you gotta remember, it's right after someone's stopped by a police officer and whether they got a ticket or not. Uh, that's all I'm going to say about the cards.
So, um, I appreciate that. How do you suppose that we get that feedback?
Uh, I'm ju, I'm just out of, maybe randomly ask, I mean, have people feed stuff back on later on, after they've calmed down or talked later about prior stops that officers have made in the past? I don't know. I just know right after you get a ticket and you're given a card and you're filling out and sending it in, whether the officer gave you a warning or he gave you a ticket, you're going to get two different impressions from that person.
Well, I mean, I can understand your, your perspective, but waiting for people to try to bring cards back in.
That's why, I don't know, I didn't think about it fully from that point, but I'm just talking about right after someone's stopped by a police officer.
I can speak a bit to community level surveys. Um, as part of the grant application, we, I spoke quite a bit with the Survey Research Lab that's based with the University of Illinois. Um, I'm not certain about the, the likelihood of response when it's administered at the time of the traffic stop, but to do a community level survey, um, you get really low response rates, especially if you don't offer an incentive, um, to, to participate in the survey. So we've tried to do it before and we get like thirty or forty back. As part of the, the grant, we, we proposed to work with the Survey Research Lab and survey fifteen hundred, attempt to survey fifteen hundred households within the city of Urbana. Um, and the cost for that was hundreds of thousands of dollars for an estimated ten percent response rate. So it's, it's hard to, to get public feedback in the form of a survey when you're sending it after the fact. I'm not certain about how it would work, um, at the, at the time of the stop, but, and then you've got the, you know, the possibility of it being, um, you know, colored by the, the outcome of the, of the stop itself, so.
Oh.
As long as we go into it with realistic expectations about response rate and, you know, potential for things like that.
So would you want to take the chair for a minute?
Would you take the chair, Bill?
Yep, I'll take the chair and recognize Mr. Roberts. All right, so, um, on the ticket, if there was a, on the tickets are usually, um, given to the traffic, uh, the driver, right? And they have to mail them back. So they're being mailed in there, so, um, you know, is there, you know, like a five, five-line comment section on the, on the ticket which could be this kind of a refeedback?
We're getting ready to switch to that e-citation thing. I'm not sure how that switches the...
That could mean some time off.
Because, because it would take some time for the individual to, um, write the check, go back to his house. It would be like, you know, five, five hours later, you know, maybe there'd be like a way of, um, addressing the situation more calmly than, you know, I mean, when you get the card and, I don't know, I mean, there's, uh, the other thing is we have a police, civilian police review board. Is that an appropriate place for a person to take a complaint about a traffic stop?
Yes.
And what, what they, when you get a ticket, you mail back in, it doesn't come to us, it goes to the cross-street, to the circuit clerk's office, so we don't get those once a person...
Well, is there an online form they could, they could go to, which would also take them out of their car and they could go and, uh, they could make a...
Yeah.
A comment section online about, which anybody could then use about any kind of interaction that they have.
Yeah, there are lots of, um, I mean, even free survey platforms that we could use. Survey Monkey is one that I've used in the past, um, but it's, yeah, I, it, the response rate is a, if we're not worried about it being generalizable and if it's just going to be, you know, kind of qualitative data, then, yeah.
I see what you're saying. Okay, thanks.
And you can have the chair back.
Thank you.
Charlie.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out a way to, to, to do it, you know? When, when you have somebody's attention right then and there, your chances of getting a response are a lot better than, you know, random survey or even when they go home. Uh, you could give them a card and say, you know, please go fill out the survey when you get home. You could try adjusting something like this by having a check, additional checkboxes, which is, did you get a ticket? Did you get a warning or was it something else? And then you could adjust for what kind of a infraction or what kind of a outcome, uh, they got. That, you know, so there's, trying to think a little bit more about how to, to take this idea and go a little further with it to try to get some responses. Anyway, I'll, I'll throw that out there, and maybe there's something like that that can work.
Eric.
So I'm trying to think for a moment, there are approximately a thousand traffic stops a year on the average in Urbana?
Three thousand.
Three thousand, okay, there are three thousand.
Thirty-five hundred-ish.
About, about how many of those are drivers from out of town?
Uh, half.
About half, okay. So, um, so about seventeen hundred, um, about seventeen hundred Urbana drivers will get stopped on Urbana streets. And there are about twenty thousand drivers in Urbana?
Ish, maybe, well, and it's, well, oh, yeah, okay, yeah. Urbana dri, Urbana driver, Urbana residents that have a driver's license or that are eligible to have a driver's license, yes.
I think that's, the national average is about half the population has driver's licenses. So, so we're, so we're saying that on the average, the average person, who doesn't exist because he, everybody's one ethnic group or another, but if there were such an average person, they would get stopped on the average of about once every twelve years. And, uh, so if they're African-American, they might get stopped once every eight years, and Caucasian-American about once every, uh, fifteen years. So it seems to me that, that the actual burden on the citizen of traffic stops, each citizen is pretty light, per citizen, unless they drive really terribly compared to the average person. So, so I don't think that in itself is such a big deal unless it's a marker for something else with respect to policing. Um, so I'm just sort of thinking out loud, but I don't, I guess, I guess what I'm thinking is that for any of our populations, the actual burden of traffic stops themselves is pretty minimal.
Right, but there is, you know, the average Urbana resident is most likely to interact with an Urbana Police Department officer in an enforcement activity in a traffic stop as opposed to anything else. So that's, the, the highest volume of interaction is from, from traffic stops, so there would be, you know, value in, in getting perceptions that way.
Okay, Aaron, you want to do it again?
Yeah, um, just on a new topic that I, I, I don't think that, I, I'm, I just can't see how you would take a Caucasian driver who, based upon your estimation, gets stopped maybe once every fifteen years, and an African-American driver once ev, every eight, or I guess if they're fifty percent more likely, once every six years.
Yeah, it, ratio would be three to two, whatever it is.
Okay. So the median income or the folks who make the most money around here, would they be African-American or Caucasian? So if you're going to tell me that Caucasians are going to get stopped once every fifteen years and African-Americans once every eight, plus you make more money, I, I don't see that as, what you mean, that's not a big deal? That is a big deal.
I'm saying that not in itself, it isn't a big deal, but if it's indicative of a more general, you know, bias, then it, then it is a big deal. Look, I'll make an analogy. I, I don't care very much about the prostate-specific antigens in my blood. They're not going to kill me, but they might represent something more serious, so I am concerned about that.
So the officer discretion, the, is there any explanation thus far of what do you think brought it down from one point nine to one point five? So what I'm getting at is that, okay, after all of this...
Well, we do, we're doing our second, we, we started implicit bias training last year, and we are doing, decide department-wide training on that in May again. There's, I mean, there's extra training we're doing with officers to realize things that they may not have seen in the past that we haven't done in the past. One is implicit bias training and other training that we're giving our officers, even PTI, their training with new officers is going through that, like policing a multicultural, uh, society. I mean, things that weren't offered ten years ago are now being offered today. So there is something, there are things that we're moving towards. So we realize what we're doing and what we're seeing and how we can fix it ourselves, but, I mean, we're still have a ways to go, I'm not saying...
So that's why I didn't want to just make it seem like I'm hammering you over the fact that there's still a one point five. I'm trying to also look at the difference from one point nine to one point five, but I, I still, I, I'm not getting the answer for why is there still one point five, and I can't get a concrete answer as to why has it went from one point nine to one point five. So I don't know what we are con, I think we're moving in the right direction, right? But what, what can we say is the reasoning behind it, right? You know what I mean? Now, you, you alluded to implicit bias, and I, and I understand that and I can appreciate that, right? So I hope that's part of it, um, and hopefully we'll continue to go in the right direction, but I just wanted something more tangible or concrete, but we'll see.
And it might, it might be, um, just the quality of policing is becoming more, more precise, and as time will go by, it, you know, maybe in a year we'll have even better information, depending on also, uh, to the extent of what, what police training has taken place in the, within the unit.
Eric.
Uh, would it be possible for the council members to get a, uh, a, a sampling of the implicit bias training? I think that would be really illuminating.
I, I can check into that. I know Alex Bateese is one who ranges and does our training, but I can check into that.
All right, we're kind of coming down to the end of the presentation, it looks like. Anything else? I think we have a good review of this.
Mayor Pressing.
Implicit bias training, um, was initiated at PTI, and I think that's the kind of thing that, that probably the instructors there should be instructing the instructors in Chicago because the Justice Department said that one of the big reasons for the problems in Chicago was lack of good training. And so I think it's, and this council and the county board also, uh, passed resolutions in favor of keeping PTI at the University of Illinois because that educational base, I think, is what's made it such a good program.
Charlie.
Yeah, in, in terms of implicit bias training, I think, without pulling out my laptop, I think Project Implicit, if you do a Google search on that, I think it's, uh, East, one of the East Coast universities has an extensive, um, collection of training along different kinds of bias, uh, associated with implicit bias. So you can look at it from various perspectives.
I just had one, uh, only the marijuana stuff. Do we have any data on, uh, the stops for the versus, tickets versus arrests on the new cite, on the new ordinance and stuff that we have in a change in the ordinance?
Um, there, so there were only two arrests that were discretionary in twenty sixteen, and I'm looking now and this header isn't correct because this is just twenty sixteen data. Um, I don't remember what the charges were. Were any of them the cannabis? I think one of them was, but it was the driver of the vehicle and then the passenger had, it, it was discretionary.
There were two, there were two arrests, but there were other, I had to look at, there were other, it wasn't just marijuana, there was other things in there that could have been, that were discretionary that's...
Specifically from traffic or were you asking at, at a more global level?
Well, it's a more global level for me, but from a traffic stop, you're saying that there's only these two. There was definitely one, maybe two that involved marijuana.
There was two that involved marijuana, yes.
There were some, and then other nondiscretionary charges that were felony amounts of marijuana or controlled substance.
Which the officer doesn't have discretion when it's a felony charge.
Right.
But overall, I mean, there were, there was a low number of traffic stops that led to arrests that involved marijuana, that that was the deciding factor. I haven't looked at the, um, at the ordinance, the, the state law changed, that changed it to civil violation instead of, I haven't looked at the, the twenty seventeen data for that yet, but the, it is in the twenty sixteen information on the, the yearly annual report that's on the website.
And to the discretionary conversation, um, how many arrests in twenty sixteen or tickets were issued in twenty sixteen for traffic violations were discretionary?
For, I'm not, I'm not sure, but I understood that.
So for instance, if I get stopped, the officer has the right to say, hey, Aaron, you were doing, you know, thirty-nine and a thirty-five. Technically, I was speeding, but he doesn't have to give me a ticket, right? So that would be discretion.
Yes.
So I'm just wondering, in those scenarios, have you looked at and sort of teased out in that scenario whether officer has discretion? You know, how many tickets were issued, how many warnings were given, and is that broken down by race?
I've done it with cite, the, the overall outcome of citation versus warning, and so that's, that is the discretion in writing a warning ticket versus a, um, versus a citation. And, yeah, we've got that here, and so our ratio, it, it's pretty closely clustered to one in twenty sixteen and even more so in, for the five-year average, for the warning only. Um, I haven't, look, there, there are so many different Illinois vehicle code violations, I could, it would take a significant amount of time, but I could probably break it down by the, like, speeding that's under ten miles an hour and speeding that's over ten miles an hour and, and kind of do it that way.
What I'm getting at is that...
The way the speeding is, the way the speeding, she can't, it's, it doesn't change until it's twenty over, the charge, so. In order for her to look at five over compared to fifteen over, it'd have to be like pulling them out by hand and checking them.
Mm-hmm. I'm just getting at the implicit bias training and all the things that you are talking about. I'm trying to sort of tease out, or if the data shows us, when an officer approaches somebody, whether it's a white male, Asian male, black female, whatever, um, how often does the officer say, you know what, I'm using discretion here for this to be a warning, and I'm, I'm using my discretion here, now I'm giving you a ticket, right? You know, I'm just trying to understand, you know, how do you...
Absolutely, there, there are two places where, where, you know, racial disparity could be decided, and that's the decision to make the stop and then the decisions that you make after the stop. And so this, this demonstrates that there's not a lot of disparity, there's less disparity after the stop is made than before the stop occurs. Um, and that, it, you know, is either at the, you know, is perceived crime-driving traffic stops in the different neighborhood policing, like Daryl said, and, and I can't answer that question yet.
Okay.
Um, so I hope to do another presentation, a quarterly, um, presentation in July, so that'll allow me to, to not only update this information here, but also go through the end of June and do quarter one, quarter two.
That way we'll have two quarters rather than just part of one, like we do now.
Well, thank you then very much. We'll talk to you again a couple months around.
And then this will be available on the website tomorrow. Uh, my apologies for not having it sooner.
And then seeing no further business, I think we're adjourned.